Good evening, everybody. Welcome to a special meeting of the City Council of the City of Pierceville. Today is Monday, September the 17th, 2018. The time out is 7:01. Roll call, please.
Mary Mark, Robert Villar.
Eric.
Richard Gadda. Sonia Hernandez.
Eric.
Brenda Trevino.
Here.
Juliana Hernandez.
Here.
Ben Risco.
Here.
Galen Fraser.
Here.
And we do have four. Let's go ahead and stand for a location. I'm going to lead you.
Y'all, let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for your stand. Lord, we thank you for the rain that you sent and the greenness that it brought to our city. Lord God, we just thank you for that. Lord, we pray that you be with us and see when you can guide us in the things that we do here and help in the boot for the city and help us to see clearly what it is that we need to be done. We thank you for our management. We pray you watch over them, department heads and our staff members. Lord, we pray for this country. We thank you for our military men who are risking their lives to defend freedom around the world. Lord God, we thank you for your son, Jesus, for it. In his name we pray. Amen.
Praise the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any citizens to be heard?
No.
Okay. New business, item A. Discuss and consider ordinance number 2018-0903 to establish a tax rate and levy for the City of Pierceville for the fiscal year beginning October the 1st, 2018, and ending September the 30th, 2019. This is an action item. I need a commotion to.
Just have a question to discuss. All the favors. Mr. Mayor, for the council, what is 2018-0903, standard ordinance? We have to do our year to adopt our tax rate. As you know, at the start of the budget process, we have to put some O's in that paper telling people what we're going to do certain things. And this was the item that was advertised for one adoption of the tax rate to potential adoption of the budget. The tax rate, we decided to go ahead and put on the agenda for not to get it done because first way forward, you guys said you didn't want to change the tax rate. So the tax rate is set the same as it was for last year, the 289, 2890. And so if you have any questions on 2890, 0.75, 0277 will be for maintenance operations, and 0.14, 0723 would be for clients, for net service. So can't really change that either. If you don't want to change it, we're not going to change it. We're going to put first one, hand it out right now.
Questions?
What percentage is that? How's it looking back right now?
Seventy-four. Seventy...
Looks like eighty-eight last year.
Yeah, looks about eighty-eight last year, about seventy-four this year.
Seventy-four.
Yeah, I had no presentation of our current factor. Seventy-four, seventy-seven, what else? I can find it for you.
It's okay.
Significantly.
Mayor Proton, I'm going to make a motion that we agree with number 2018-0903. The steps, tax rate, and set for 2018, 19.
Do I need your second? Did you remember this has to be a roll call on this one?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Call roll for roll.
Mary, you were not present. Robert Villar. Four again.
Four.
Sonia Hernandez.
Four.
Four.
Richard Gadda, not present. Brenda Trevino. Four. Galen Fraser.
Four.
Ben Risco. Four. Juliana Hernandez.
Four.
A little security note, please.
Second item on the new business. Discussion of possible action authorized by the city manager and city attorney to negotiate draft payments in lieu of taxes, pilot agreement with South Texas electric. This is an action item. I need a motion to discuss, please. Motion.
Second.
All the favor.
Mr. Mayor, for the council, we discussed this during, I think, the first budget workshop as something that I had tried to set to see if we could get them to come to the table and look at potentially minimum pilot agreement with us rather than an annexation of the property out there. Had not heard anything back from them until last Thursday. On last Thursday, Bobby did get a call from the attorney who originally reached out to us from STEC, basically saying that she was turning down her conference call on Friday, and she ended up talking about it on Friday. Had the conference call, they turned it over to another lawyer who does that stuff for them. And he has said that there may be an interest from them to look forward to the pilot agreement rather than being subject to an annexation. The only thing that he asked was that prior to us discussing anything with him or finding a couple, some kind of draft, would you guys consider that the council authorized me and Bobby to talk to him so that then he could go up to their board and say, well, they've been authorized to authorize me to do something together? So yeah, let's talk about what this potentially could be.
Before you go further, for the record, Councilman, I'm not arrived at 7:06, please.
So, a pilot agreement or payment of low taxes is an agreement that you can enter into with anybody who is not good because of the subject of annexation or for the purpose to you. For this purpose, it's subject of annexation. Wherein you can agree to, by the, where they give you money, a payment, and a fee, and extended tax. Lots of advantages to it. Actually, this would have two significant advantages to it. One, if we're going to agree to a pilot agreement, they would have to agree to give us a payment next fiscal year because that's the only thing that would make any sense for us. If they're arguing to give us a payment next fiscal year, we just spend this annexation and get full taxes on that for that. So in exchange for agreeing to pay next year, then they get a slightly lower rate than what they would get before, so ninety, ninety-five percent, so they make it up over time. But I think we could come up with something as far as that, which would be very beneficial for them and for us because it would make a major portion of what the taxable value is available to us in the next fiscal year without having to make that extra year. Second advantage is in that pilot, by doing that, you don't end up annexing them, so you're not responsible for water, sewer, you know, police protection, whatever else. I mean, that's a whole other portion of it, is you get out of the white service, and that's part of the reduction and the payment as well. Now, another potential thought here is, remember when we started the annexation program this year, and we started talking about what we could do because we hadn't done an annexation in the previous three years? We could have something thirty percent of our area. Well, that's eight hundred, or three hundred something acres left out there, which may give us enough to get across the road at any point in time. Because we didn't have enough left to get across the road at any point in time. Taking them off if we did get a pilot agreement with them would give us enough, at least our pocket group are maybe the same, they were Cooper as well, but it would give us enough room inside of that to be able to get across the highway and try to get that. That's another large taxable value property across the road. So, you know, from the start, we thought that this would be the best thing we could do, if this would be the best option for us with STEC. Could potentially make, potentially change our budget by about, our revenue is about five hundred fifty thousand dollars per year if we get this agreement. So I would recommend that you authorize us to at least talk to them and see what we can come up with and bring something back if we have to consider.
King, maybe that sounds good. What is your timeline? You know, we've got two weeks, you know, thirteen days?
Right. Probably not by October 1st. So when we go through the presentation here in a little while of the options that we're going to lay out, things that we worked on over the nine hundred hour we worked this weekend, you know, this is something that we have in there, but we don't have it built into this because it's still in development. We need to move forward with getting a budget out. We need to get a budget done. Very easy to sign this agreement October 2nd and have a special meeting on October 5th and come in and amend the budget because we know we're going to have the extra money to be able to make it. One of the other things, one of the other things we're going to have to look at doing with them because of the timing on this, so if they were going to pay property taxes, they would be due January, you know, so they would be paid somewhere between November and January. They have a budget just like we do, and obviously this half a million plus is not in their budget right now. So one of the things we talked about was probably going to have to look at pushing their payment off maybe till March 1st instead of January 1st because they're going to need a little bit of time to be able to take it and figure it out as well. And that's going to be, that would be an incentive in the agreement probably for them as well as, we're not going to make, we'll give you a few extra months to get it taken into there. Reality is, they're going to push it off the rates to their, the people they're selling energy to anyway, they're not going to absorb it out of their, they're going to have to have a little bit of time to get this job done.
And you're looking at somewhere between ninety, ninety-five percent where you believe this will settle?
That's, I don't know. There'd be no reason for us to go full dining. No reason. I was thinking. Let's give up way too much for one year.
Yeah. And five hundred and fifty is a hundred percent, or is that...
No, five hundred and fifty to ninety.
Ninety percent.
Yes, just for one year?
No, so that's going to be one of the things, obviously, that's going to be in the parameters that we're going to talk about. I would not recommend to the council anything but it be in perpetuity. Because, for it to be in perpetuity, it'd be ninety percent in perpetuity for the existence of that property, to include any development that comes up afterwards or whatever else. Because I assume what they're going to look at is, they're going to want to say, okay, we'll do ninety percent for ten years, and then we want to be done, and you guys can't ever touch this again. Well, why would we do that? Because we're going to, you know, thirty years of revenue, so. But at a ninety percent number, with them paying this year on the pilot, they're, so they've basically prepaid five hundred fifty thousand because if we annex it, they have a house to pay this year. So they're going to look at and say, okay, ninety percent is going to take us ten years to make up that first year's payment, but then every year after that, we're going to have a ten percent savings on what we would be paying the city. And so this is how much money we're going to make off of that off the back end. And that's the way they're going to look at it, and that's the way we need to look at it. It needs to be forever because the annexation is forever. It's not going to be longer.
I think you and I talked about something like this, and I remember that you mentioned condo, this commonest of these programs. They ran into us snag with something.
So basically, what happened at condo is, they worked to get pilot agreements with almost everything in their ETJ. So you have your city limits, and then you've got one line cushioned around the city limits, which is your ETJ. And they basically went up pilot agreements with everybody out there in ETJ and said, okay, we'll do a fifty percent pilot agreement with you, whatever the number was, and we want annexed. And so everybody agreed. Then they tried to jump that ETJ and start annexing on the other side, and that's where they got it from. And the first place they tried to annex was the big money place on there for the people on monies, the monies that didn't know. Because you have to be contained. And so the pilot, because they didn't leave themselves a core around their pilot agreements, they had all this else to go.
So that would have to just, like, true?
No. No. Because we're already down, okay, we'll just continue down on it. So that would look.
And is Cooper possibly your partner?
I would say that would be their best interest as well. And their race track's worth, I guess, a ton of money. Even though it's not race car, it's the value of what's in there. It's worth a lot. We looked at it, it was going to be, I remember, right, what we were looking at, it was a hundred and twenty-something thousand, you know, property taxes on that one.
That's anticipated for Cooper?
No, somewhere around a hundred twenty, hundred, very similar in there. We're here.
The ASL taxes, though?
I don't know much about ASL taxes. I don't think so. Because I think that's all testing and transit testing. But if they got race cars sitting there to pay taxes on that, too, we didn't look, we looked at the track itself and the land, but we didn't look at their personal property value of what's in there. So they got race cars themselves, so they're not out of the cluster as well. And obviously, they got race cars sitting there, but that's how I test it. So on the personal property part, that would be another chunk there.
Is it still being used, though?
So, so this would work out pilot-wise for those two businesses? What would be an exit now? If they still...
Still have, still have, still plenty of acres to keep doing other stuff. I mean, this would be huge for STEC. And then also, Cooper, because Cooper takes a hundred, it's a hundred acres apart.
I just think that Cooper takes it.
And if we can get, if we can get Cooper to jump to STEC as well, we still have all the acres left over that we used to do additional annexations.
What are one of Pierceville's...
There's still a little bit out on North Oak, but, you know, San Diego Ranch is still out there on North Oak. Q, what's it called?
The Haiku?
Haiku is still out there on North Oak. We looked at Haiku, the taxable value wasn't there, we thought it was going to be out there. We're always going to look at it, but it is, it's up there. And anything that's fronted along that road at some point, you know, that's, I mean, that's stuff grows and it'll grow up on there. I mean, there's a lot of potential out there. Anything that's fronted up on thirty-five, I don't know. There's still, you know, there was an annexation done at one time on the south side that included the cell warrant and all that, and that was the annex because they never did anything out there. Sales taxes that got in the cell warrant were huge. Everybody said there's a lot of sales tax person about cell warrant.
I think they're adding them.
Cell warrant?
I think they are.
Well, we can look at it and see, but there's some other businesses long past that out there on that road as well that aren't. Basically, it's not in the city limits. Not that we can get that, that's the level. There's basic, there's another big one right there, too.
What about this, just, just, it just goes out there?
Out there, Williams is out. Maybe a stretch for us to get out there. That becomes, that becomes what's called a spaghetti annexation, which is what the laws here stop, is we have to grab a little thin strip, a long ways to get to it. San Antonio, that's not where it is. Yeah. San Antonio, we're going to root for everybody.
I have a question. So we're going to possibly offer, if it gets approved, a pilot program to STEC. Is there any other entities that we're thinking of that could, maybe any other entities that are within the annexation?
You know, we were so focused on that part of town when we looked, because everything was going that way, and there was a lot of businesses and stuff. I've really looked at the other ancillary areas to see what's out on that road, what's out. We haven't really had a chance to sit down and look and say, well, which route we go for the best, most worst, or in the next direction to go. And I really think if this thing happens with STEC and we can get this done, I mean, Cooper was part of the original conversation, so we look at Cooper, they come back and go, then I think it's time to have another annexation workshop and sit down and talk about it and say, you know, what do we want to do? Do we want to do it anymore right now? And if we knew which direction we wanted to go?
Don't we have Helena down?
We got Helena.
Helena and Jackson, who's...
Jackson's in phase one, Helena was in phase two. Ingram was in phase one.
Fifty-eight-two, like, the two were, why?
Yeah, there's some more out there on fifteen-eight-two as well. And of course, one out fifteen-eight-two, that's text on road, we're not responsible for the road if we have to annex. Anything we can take, anything on text on road is a start advantage, obviously, because we're not responsible for the road. That's why we're with North Oak.
I have a question to accomplish. Do you see any potential pitfalls on the pilot program?
No. You've done it before, I think, as well. Has there been any...
Are there some?
Okay. But there shouldn't be any problem, especially if you agree for them to negotiate the terms with them.
So this could be a long-lasting relationship?
Tolerant, tolerant of...
Successful one?
Yeah. Tolerant, tolerant of. You know, there's another, there's another advantage in this respect that I haven't mentioned, though. You know, as a power generation company, they're always looking to expand as well. And so at that point, set amount, their cost is kind of known, to where if they try to go some, you know, if they have another facility someplace else or whatever, and they don't have a pilot here, they're going to pay a hundred percent, or there's a potential for, you know, for a change there, they know what they're going to have to pay here, and they know they're going to get a percentage off of whatever they do. So there's, that has an incentive for them to expand out here as well. And based on the conversation that Bobby had with that attorney, it was very short, but one of the things he said in there kind of led me to believe that that's one of the things they're looking at here, is an expansion here for them. Well, so I think that's part of the reason they may be interested as well. And if they are looking at expansion, and they know they can lock in that ninety percent rate or whatever, boy, that sure might be a reason for them to jump. They may get that savings back quicker in ten years, and we'll just get more money out of it.
Or additions, then, if you, would you consider, would you be considering a different percentage?
Well, we could do that, too, to give them an incentive to build more. So I'm sure that's one of the things they're going to break up when we sit down and talk, is, you know, what about in the future, do we get eighty-five percent? And then the council can consider that, say, eighty-five percent of something is better than zero percent of nothing, if they don't build something out there. So yeah, let's say eighty-five percent is fine. Build it. Okay. That's great.
I'm not, I'm going to ask you what you just said. I don't think I understood about the eighty-five percent. But if we give the ability for you and the council to negotiate, I'd like to kind of set some parameters, subject, of course, to the council approval, but that doesn't go below ninety percent, in that it is perpetual and that it does include any improvements. And I think with those guidelines, you know, subject to council approval, you know, that would be, the only thing I'm thinking about, Councilor, there's a question kind of for you, is, Doug Teal and, Newland's question. Are we shooting ourselves in the foot with a perpetual? I mean, I want it, I do want it to go forever. I like that part. But what is the, I mean, what is the negative aspect of perpetual that might get us?
Well, if you were to set a term limit, for example, ten years, then after the ten years, they can pay the full amount or they win the annex. And if you do it perpetually, then it gives them more of an incentive to want to come into the pilot agreement, and then it gives you that money upfront to calculate it to, for example, this year's budget. And it gives them also an opportunity to expand, to bring more business, depending on how they're going to do it, and be able to collect taxes on that as well, so.
So there's some little hooks in there when you're talking about perpetual as well, and you got lots. So when they're thinking perpetual, one of the things that they're probably thinking about is, okay, current tax rate, current tax value, that amounts perpetual.
Yeah.
And so we need to make sure that it's that angle tax rate, that angle appraisal value. You know, those are the things that are perpetual. It's an agreement that you're going to get ninety percent reduction off of our current tax rate versus your current value, so you can expand, whatever. So there's a little hooks in there that they're going to try to, you know, they're going to think, well, we could lock in an amount, and we're not going to lock in, we want to lock in a map. We want to lock in a program that says ninety percent year tax. So that's kind of a two-way sword for them because that rate, if they never did expand each year, that would still be depreciated. So by us saying it's ninety percent of your actual tax, actual tax value each year is going down because of depreciation, but then if they ask them to do, then it goes up, or if they replace them, then it goes up. So it kind of works both ways, where for them, if they're really trying really hard to lock in an amount, that's pretty obvious that they're planning on expansion. And so that's what we know.
And what were you saying about the eighty-five percent?
Well, so that could be one of the conditions, one of the things to put in there, is it's ninety percent of everything that exists right now, but if you guys want to expand and build something new, we'll give you a little slight lower rate on that to give them an incentive to build here instead of building someplace else.
The lower percentage is only on the additions.
Yeah, only on the new stuff that they built after the agreement goes into place. And that gives them an incentive to come here rather than going to some other facility that's someplace else and building there.
Would it be perpetual as well? Be the eighty-five percent if we...
Could.
Potentially.
Yeah. So the eighty, all was approved, it'll be eighty-five percent from then on.
What if the tax rate, what if the council in future...
Then, the way, the way of the structure agreement, then it'll go down.
If it go down?
Yeah. It was current tax rate for that year, current value for that year, even on the tax rate that went down, their taxes would go down, or their pilot costs would go down.
And a perpetual... I don't want to go into it. And a perpetual, we don't have to provide services.
No.
But if you make a term, at the end of the term, they may say, now we must do provided services.
If, if, they may say, we make a term, at the end of the term, we can annex, too. That may be part of what they want in there. If you say fifteen years, it's okay, we'll do it fifteen years, and after fifteen years, you're not able to annex us. And that's, I guarantee you, if you do a term, that's something they're going to ask for me.
Which is pretty standard.
Which is pretty standard, or that's not, or...
On the, on the building, like, expand, you're talking about expanding, on that type of business, pretty much, like, if they're going to expand anywhere here, or they're going to build, or they need more power, they're usually going to do it from this place, not from another place.
Yeah, so we want to have an incentive there for them to do it here. And they've got lots of land there that they're not using, and there's a reason they bought all that actually.
And that's why I'm saying, you know, because, I mean, if they found expanding, but they need more power in the area, they're going to expand here, not nowhere else.
So they don't have to say the transmission house. And add now the transmission office. And so I think their intent when they built this was, if the whole field continued to expand, there would be a higher energy draw, and that's why they have that big chunk out there. I think they're looking at, at that expansion, especially that includes the whole southern part of Eagle Ford, that's a primary source of power. So I think they're looking at, I think we have potential for this, they just continue to grow and provide additional records all made here. And knowing that if we go sit down with them, not even sit down and talk to them, whatever we go up with, send it back to you guys for approval, so, I mean, it's not like we're going to go negotiate a contract and I say, here you go. I mean, send that back to the council for approval.
Mayor.
Go ahead.
Another question, I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the council and our chief manager to negotiate terms, and would like it to be the benchmarks of no less than ninety percent, that it is perpetual in nature and inclusive of future.
We have a commotion on the floor. Councilman Briscoe, do we have a second?
Second.
All the favor. Commotion passes.
So, just to finish up, I'm hoping, we told them we're having a meeting tonight, I'm hoping that we get a meeting, so we can really, very, very, face-to-face, or if we can, since we begin this thing, we'll, this is pretty much off.
Hi, I'm C. Council workshop. Number one, review and discuss the proposed annual appropriation budget for the fiscal year beginning October the 1st, 2018, and ending September the 30th, 2019, as submitted by the city manager, finance director, and administrative staff.
Motion to this, uh...
All the favor.
Okay, Mr. Mayor Proton, City Council. So, we spent a lot of time since last meeting trying to wrap our heads around everything we heard, trying to figure out some alternatives based on everything, everything we heard, and have more than one option available when we sit down to talk, like, if you guys have that. So we kind of, kind of put it into a presentation format because there were a lot, and we worked hours and hours and hours, because we did try to put numbers together, it's very important. But figured the easiest way to do this is going to be to do it in a presentation format. As we go along through the presentation of the options, the things that we came up with are at the end for you guys to look at, but there's some things that I think we really, we had to, questions we were trying to answer for ourselves to understand things a little bit better as we're going through it, so we wanted to make sure that you guys saw the answers that we were seeing while we were going through it as well, so you guys understand where we're coming from. So, from the last meeting, we kind of boiled it down to three issues that we really came up with at the last meeting that were issues for everyone. And one of those issues would be the employees need to be paid more competitively, another issue being that there's more positions wanted, and another issue being that the cycle team bigger unit updated and everything. Of course, there's those three things were kind of paramount part of what we talked about in that long meeting we had the other night. So, the first thing we started looking at, so we gave you some numbers earlier in the year, and we talked about how we compare with other cities as far as the number of employees we have versus what other cities our size with a similar type general fund budget have. And so the question I had, because, okay, why are we so far behind?[1668.81] And so, the question I had, we kind of, okay, why are we so far behind? We talked about a few of the reasons we're so far behind in total numbers of employees there and there else, but there's some other things here, too, and so I wanna make sure that you guys get the big picture if we're looking at this whole thing. So, one of the things that, that hit us when it comes to the number of employees we have is this, if the oil was finished, the consequences came out of that spending. One of them is loss of big businesses, one of them is the way the twenty-twelve bond was financed, one of them is the twenty-fifteen salary climate was approved as part of the budget, and the other one is the lack of a salary schedule, so we're gonna kind of go through each one of these topics. Now, the picture that I have over there on the right, will give you an idea, that's a little, that's sales tax per year, and that gives you an idea of what happened. So, when you look at that part of that side, it took us a number of years to go from a half a million dollars to a million dollar, you can see that work, I mean, or that whole time spent, for us to go from a half a million to a million dollar in sales tax a year. And then, in two years, double again, and two years, double again, and kind of held there a little, kind of close to that for a year, and then it crashed right back off. We're gonna kind of talk about that cycle, and what happened during that cycle, how it affected us. So, all those things, the consequences. So, sales tax increases in twenty thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen were used to fund, increase positions, and to increase salary wealth. Those, the positions were not immediately all reduced, so those funds were lost, and the increased sales tax revenues led to a reduction in that lower taxes. So, when we go back through and look at, we've printed out report after report out of our financial system trying to figure this out. Twenty fourteen and fifteen, when we had so many city employees, a lot of those city employees were hired as temporary employees, no benefits, anything, they were just brought in as, as a temporary employee, ten, ten, eleven, twelve dollars an hour, whatever, and given a whole rush shuttle up, totally new stuff. But there was additional positions that were out there at that time as well, because we had so much more in sales tax to utilize, that those numbers continued to increase. As those funds started to drop off, those temporary positions, of course, were gone because they were temporary in nature, so they, they weren't meant to last, and they were gone, but the budgets were held, and when I first came in, twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, for the twenty-fifteen budget into twenty sixteen, and since then, we tried a whole lot of budgets, and basically what happened last year to budget was, we ended up having to cut some of those positions that were created, when we were at three-point-two million dollars in sales tax, those were the positions that we cut last year to try to balance the budget. So it wasn't like we went back to other levels, we were just trying to get rid of, actually, we're not getting rid of, but we were having to cut what was brought in at thirteen, and fourteen, and fifteen, when we were at the three-million-dollar level, just to be able to try to balance out, because they weren't at the three-million-dollar level anymore, we were at two-million-dollar level. One of the other things, of course, there, we, we have to remember that any of these sales tax did, did decrease that lower taxes, that's why the council had to do the tax increases for the two years before, was to try to recover some of that lower taxes that were lost, and some of the sales taxes that were lost. Lots of big businesses, we talked about this a little bit the other day, of course, the Super Walmart, we know they wanted to come here, that ended up in mind, there was talk about these, the Super H B, the Big H B plus coming here, and they developed a label. If you look at the sales revenues, the sales tax revenues of those two businesses, it's about one point seven, that's one point seven-five million a year in lost sales tax, just for those two. Now, we have an H B, never mind, but we don't have that H B, we don't have that Walmart, and our, so we're, we're looking at probably a loss in, in sales tax revenue, that's about a million dollars a year between the super stores and the size stores that we have. So if you take that million dollars a year, and you look at that, how, how that would have affected the city if we would have, if we would have got those businesses? That million dollars a year in sales tax, about two-thirds of it goes to the general fund, and one-third would have went to offseting that lower taxes, because that's where our sales taxes are structured, for every one, one and a half cents we get, one cent, most of the general fund, half a cent goes to offset, offset profit taxes. So, just, just that loss from those two, that's eighteen positions at thirteen dollars and fifty cents a hour. So there's eighteen lost by not getting those two businesses. Add a reduction in our lower tax rate of about ten percent, because there had been an extra three hundred and thirty-three thousand that would have went to offset profit taxes. So.
So, what was the number of employees in twenty thirteen, fourteen?
I'll get that, I'll get that, that is in here. So, the twenty-twelve bond, we talked about the twenty-twelve bond, those financed from sales tax revenues, that was based on a one-year reserve increase in sales taxes. So they saw a big increase in one year, and they came in here and improved that bond and paid for all the sales taxes. That pays us about seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year. So that's seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year, if you're looking at a thirteen dollar and fifty-seven hour employee benefits, that's about nineteen more. So between the loss of those two businesses, and the way that bond was financed, that's thirty-seven employees lost right there, we've got sixty-six, that puts us at a hundred and five, that's business equivalent with everybody else's. So those two things right there can account for all the employees that we're talking about, with other cities comparatively, same size as us. The twenty-fifteen salary schedule and stipends, there was a, trying to retain employees at that time, there was a big, this little picture over here, it's a spreadsheet, and that's all I have, that, what was presented at that time to use to, to put some of those stipends and some of the changes in salaries in. It was approved based on a projection of three-point-five million dollars in sales tax. Yeah, at the end of the year, we saw two million dollars in sales tax that year, that's the year I came in, I came in in the middle of that budget. And so we were really gonna have short, a lot of it going forward. And so that was the year we cut everything, and stopped everything, and didn't do anything for the last six months. But, the raise, the, the changes that were made in salaries, the stipends, all stuff that was already in there, and so it had to be paid for, it was to be paid for out of this increase in sales tax that never materialized, and we carried that forward ever since, and that's part of what that, that's me in the shape where we're in last year, where we had to cut the positions, because some of that stuff was carried forward. And obviously, we talked about the stipend, the stipends, which will be paid to this day, so that was carried forward with that, too, because that, that document right there, that spreadsheet, this tape together, is what we created. So, that's been part of the problem with us trying to straighten out where we're at as far as salaries and positions go as well. The lack of the salary schedule, some people a higher level, some people a lower level, because we didn't have enough money to bring them in at a set rate, that's been part of the problem as well. And so when you go back to the, to look at what we had to do last year, again, because we didn't have, there was not a set salary schedule, when people were brought in in that twenty fourteen, thirteen, fifteen period, when there was more sales tax, when they were brought in at higher levels, and then people, other times were brought in at lower levels, part of what had to happen last year with the reduction in positions was to try to normalize that back against, back to where we were before to pay what we were paying based on revenue that was coming in. So, number of city employees by year, if you go back and look at the years that we had, twenty eleven, we had seventy employees, twenty twelve, seventy-six, twenty thirteen, we had a hundred, twenty fourteen, ninety, fifteen, eighty-three, sixteen, eighty, seventeen, seventy-eight, and of course, we did the reduction to ten last year to try to get back to a level. Now, here's the thing that's interesting, if you look at, at what we, what we generated in sales tax each year, if you look at the, what we generated in twenty eighteen, which is right about two million, and you look at what we generated in twenty eleven, the usable portion of sales tax is almost identical. In twenty eleven, we generated one point two million, so that's eight hundred thousand dollars less than we generated last year, we had seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars payment to come off the top of that now. So the two million we got, the usable, was actually about one point two million, because we have to make that payment off the top. So the number of employees we have now versus the number of employees we had in twenty eleven, very similar, based on the revenue we have available to do that. And I put that picture up there, so if anybody wants to complain about problems, they can go to the one street and use it. So, some realities here, so this, this, we're going through all this stuff this weekend, trying to, trying to figure out what to do or where to go. What can we do, what can't we do? So what, what we, what we can't do is, we can't recover the money that was spent or go, that's not, we're not gonna see that again. We can't get the lost businesses back, they're gone, we're gonna see those again. The second part of that, there's those, we're not, never gonna get the ancillary businesses, the, the Whataburkers, and the shoe stores, all the things that surround the H B, all that, we'll never get those either, because they all ended up on the line. Or the ancillary businesses that follow Super Walmart, we'll never get those either, because they all ended up on the line, so we missed all those. The twenty-twelve bond cannot be refinanced until twenty twenty-three, that's the first holiday on us, so there's nothing we can really do for at least five more years to try to change anything in the structure of that, but obviously, we can't fix everything at once. What we can do is, we can try to establish some baselines and everything, so that we don't have these problems going forward. We can work to keep what we have, and we can plan to expand with new opportunities, understanding that we're gonna have some limitations for our past, and we'll, we'll obviously, we'll talk about the second agreement that we made this time. So, I gave that to Peter the other day, that picture up there, this is our new launch right around here, if you come in and you propose a solution to the problem, we're gonna call, why not, from now on, we're not gonna call anything else, so we're gonna propose some solutions, so we're not lying tonight, so I wanted to put that up there. So here's where we are right now, current picture today, we have a general fund surplus in the draft budget that you have, there's a surplus of eight thousand, three hundred and ninety-seven dollars and sixty-six cents. Utility fund, the draft version that you have right now, there is a surplus of ten thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars and thirty-seven, thirty-four cents, which is the total surplus between the two of eighteen thousand, five forty-six, as you're looking at. You have, up on your, I gave you before the meeting started, the first thing that looks like this. We have the openings of the RFPs that we received for the insurance this morning. We have one option on there, that is a Blue Cross Blue Shield option, that is actually lower than the United Healthcare option that we had before, by about seventy thousand more, and, yeah, by about twenty thousand more, actually, there's a total difference, because we're looking at it costing us about three thousand more, this one is about seventeen thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixteen cents less. All the proposals that we got is probably the best option, we did put accepting or voting on the RFP on tonight's agenda, my fault, I forgot this on Wednesdays, because it's gonna have to be sent before we do the budget, but we know what number we're looking at, at least as we're talking about the proposals. So we have a savings of seventeen thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixteen cents from that. So if you put the two of those together, we've got about thirty-six thousand dollars total left that we can do something with, so keep that number in mind, the thirty-six thousand. And then remember that the eighty-eighty plan cost was about a hundred and ninety-five thousand, zero sixty-two, so the general fund portion of that, that's about a hundred and sixty-eight thousand total. So general fund portion, you're probably talking about one eight total, because your insurance sponsors credit clock across both funds, so there's, there's, so this whole, that, that portion, right, the one sixty-eight plus the eight, plus a portion of the insurance, because part of the insurance is paid at both months, because it has already employees there, so probably about a hundred and eight thousand dollars. So the things that we talked about, we're gonna put them up there, and talk about those different options, and we're gonna try to go through the pros and the cons of each one, because this is how we're trying to get through all this stuff this weekend. So, option one, the eighty-eighty plan, eighty-eighty plan provides for salary equality for forty-four of our sixty-five employees, it would approve our out, it would approve our turnover rates on the lower-paying positions, and would reward, would reward those that have shown loyalty to the city. The biggest con, and some of that obviously, is the price of employees. But, talking about the stack option maybe happening, that we can look at that real quick, hopefully, we can look at that within another month, and be able to deal with that. So that's option one. Option two, adding additional positions, so the proposal adding additional positions that provides additional limited help to departments that get the additional employees, and it would require salary equality in those departments, so that's good for that department. The cons is not, is not apply across all employees equally, that may lead to reduce for our other departments that do not get selected to get additional employees. If, one of the things we did talk about, the nice, we added, added employees, it doesn't require, it would require additional, excuse me, funds to support those employees, like equipment, vehicles, whatever we need for them to do their job. It may not lead to anything more than a raise for a handful of current employees that people still coming in at ten dollars an hour, so we're not gonna buy that. So let's say that you guys pick parks, and you wanna put two more employees in parks, and you're gonna have thirteen fifty an hour, okay? So salary equality, we're gonna have to give everybody in that department up to thirteen fifty before we bring in two new positions at thirteen fifty, because if we don't, then as soon as you post those positions, people in the department are gone, and they're gonna go get jobs, and they're gonna have two vacancies at ten dollars an hour, or whatever, they can consider to those positions. If you provide salary equality within the department, and you move everybody up to thirteen fifty, and then post those two positions, now, people in other departments that didn't get new positions, they're gonna apply for those jobs, and I can't tell them they can't apply. So now we're gonna have current employees that are gonna apply for those, and if they're employees, they're gonna get them, and their ten-dollar half jobs are gonna go over there, so it's gonna, it would equate to some positions getting brought up to where they should be, but it's not gonna equate to new people coming in at anything but ten dollars an hour, because those are the positions that are gonna be vacant when it first time you fill a position. We're gonna end up in the same, the same boat with, with our retention and our other departments that we got there, and it will still be the number of employees across departments at ten dollars an hour. So let's look at what that would cost. So, the initial cost to add additional employees, if you're gonna take the departments that you guys talked about, the ones you talked to, and you asked about additional employees, then I can have them up there. And so to get the, all the employees in the department that are below thirteen fifty an hour to the thirteen fifty an hour level, at parts, that's thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars and twenty cents upfront, just to bring the other employees up to that, up to that rate. And then for each position you add, on the right, it's gonna cost thirty-eight thousand, sixty-eight dollars and eighty cents for salary benefits, and that doesn't include any equipment, or whatever, uniforms, or whatever else. The streets departments, to get everybody up to the thirteen fifty, would cost sixteen thousand, three sixty-six, and it would cost thirty-eight thousand per employee out of that. Rightway department, it would cost twenty thousand to get everybody up, same cost per additional employee. Finals department, it would cost four thousand, six hundred and seventy-six to get the, the one employee that's below thirteen fifty to thirteen fifty, and then thirty-eight to sixty-eight. Utilities, it would cost forty-four thousand, three twenty-eight, forty-eight to get everybody to that level, and then thirty-eight thousand per employee out of that. The P D, they're not, they're way above the thirteen fifty, so it wouldn't cost anything to bring everybody up to equality, but for each position you add, basically, it costs you to pay the full employee. So, if you're gonna add two employees to any department, that's what it would cost you on the right for each department. So at a partial department, the initial cost is there, again, the total to add to the position will be a hundred and eight thousand, eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars and eighty cents. Streets department, the total to add to would be ninety-two thousand, five hundred and three sixty. Rightway would be ninety-six, six forty-one. Finance, they only ask for one, so it's, it's up there to rate for one employee, and the two would be forty-two thousand, seven forty-four. Utilities will cost a hundred and twenty thousand, four sixty-six, and the P D to add to, adoption ninety-eight, five ninety-three, again, all including vehicles, equipment, all that stuff, that's what it would cost, just for salary benefits. So, so there's those numbers to go, option two, you have about a hundred and eighty thousand for saving somewhere right around there, so you can, you can probably add, if you picked, you picked two departments that were under a hundred thousand, you might be able to get four employees total, or pretty close to four, without including all other possible, a lot of those. Thirdly, we talked about stipends. The stipend program that we had, one of the concerns we heard there the other day was that if we just do away with stipends, we're gonna have a bunch of people that are gonna, there's gonna be a reduction in pay for a bunch of people, and if that's true, there's a significant number, well, not a significant number, there's about thirty-five employees that if you just get away with stipends and didn't do anything else, it would be a reduction in pay for them. And the cost on those stipends is about sixty-one thousand, on the stipends we have right now, sixty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, again, we're talking about they're not, they're not equally applied across departments, and they've not been authorized since twenty fifteen, but were entered into payroll systems recurring, so when we print out the budgets for each year, it showed up as part of the salary, and so that's why it's been included every year. I gave you a, a document last week that potential, if you could change, structure, how to change that, whatever, I'm drawing a document, I always do that, but one of the things that we talked about is, the concern is, that if we get away with the stipends, that there's gonna be people negatively impacted, so how can we readdress the stipends and make them fair, or nobody would be negatively impacted? So that was what we kind of started looking at with stipends, as a potential replacement plan for the, for the stipend plan, was how can we do it where it's beneficial for recruiting, where it's beneficial for retention, and where it's equally, it's equal across the board, and if we can use it as a tool, as far as keeping employees, rather than, than we, something that is, is a problem. So, there are certain stipends that, that we talked about, that we can't, you know, that we don't really wanna give it up. One of those was the viable stipend that just needs to be applied across the board, or there's some kind of certification program, and if it's a position that's necessary to have, and then it's something that's beneficial for the person to have jobs. So basically, somebody who's interacting with customers, and that would be something that would be available to them, because we need people to be able to, to, to be by the right of jobs. The shift differential, that, I mean, by law, you have to, you have to have that included, we need to include it, not only for the P D, but for other guys that go out and work in that as well, so that's something else. So with the K nine stipend, obviously, you know, we need to be able to take care of our, of our, our people who are taking care of the dogs, they have extra requirements to go with that, and we want the dogs taking care of what the training kept up, we want that, so that's one that we, that's a separate thing, that requires a separate duty away from work time, the way we do it. What for the volunteer fire department, we talked about that a little bit, and I kind of have, I learned some more about that since the last meeting, and so, go ahead.
Okay, for the record?
Mayor Moore, Rod, at seven forty-eight.
The stipend for the volunteer fire department was committed at a time when they were very low on membership, so it was trying to get the membership number filled up, like we talked about this a little bit last time, we had to depart the school, and it was all right, it's already, which means everybody's insurance is cheaper, and that's important, that's why I agree. I, this year, I found out this year, when they have their, their recruiting this year, they actually turned away people who wanted to be volunteer firefighters, because they're full. So now, look at this, it's simply, we got people that are volunteering, and we're paying employees over here to be there, is that really what, is that the best use of that money, is to do that? One of the other things I can't predict, you admit it, you were, we had a comment about the transportation being closed, not being open enough. Well, one of the things with the employees is that they're in the volunteer fire department, they're fireball, they're tired of it, they go. And so, if we've got four volunteers that are, that are employees, they're being pulled away from their regular jobs, maybe we'd rather start keeping them in their regular jobs and not having them in the volunteer fire department, unless we get back to the point where we can't keep our numbers up over there. So maybe that's a stipend that we don't need to offer anymore, because we have enough people in the community that are taking care of that, and that's not taking it away from normal work hours to be able to, to do that. So that's one that we, we, that's why I have a question, of course, if they're deciding to allow it, well, that's necessarily what we wanna keep in mind. So, going all the way together, with the concern that, okay, if we get rid of the stipends, here's the problem, we've got people that are going to, how do we reduce it in their pay? All those other things, being extremely helpful at this thing will stick with time. All those other things, being extremely helpful at this thing will step aside. But knowing that the reality is that if the pilot agreement doesn't work out, then one year, if it doesn't work out, then we're gonna get what we're gonna do. This is what we came up with, we're gonna say what we came up with, I gave you a piece of paper, I'll show it to you on a piece of paper, and then we're gonna let you guys ask questions, talk to you, whatever you want to do. This is, I mean, after all the hours, this is the best option we can come up with. If the A D salary plan is left in, there's forty-four employees that are positively impacted from that. The lost stipends are more than made up for ninety-five percent of employees with the A D salary plan, so even losing the stipends, they're still making more money under the A D plan than they were making before with the stipends. And the new stipend plan, which is the big old gigantic piece of paperwork that I gave you, it's very hard to read, but I was trying to fit it all with these pieces of paper where you guys can see it. There was some concern with the way the stipends were structured last time, especially the tenure stipends, because on the tenure stipends, there were people that were here for seven years, that were being paid more for tenure than people that had been here for four years. It was very backwards. So, in an effort to make sure that we made up for all the stipends in a way that would reward the majority of our employees for sticking around, the recommended, this deal is we go with the A D salary plan, would take us down to a total of six stipends if we left the volunteer fire department, which I recommend we do. The first will be a tenure stipend. The tenure stipend will be based on years of service, if you've been here more than forty years, it'll be a hundred dollars a month added to your paycheck every month. Thirty years would be ninety dollars, twenty years would be eighty dollars, ten years would be seventy, five years would be sixty, and two years would be fifty. So there's stepping stones all the way through it that are pretty close together to try and get you up to the level, and that's something that you know you're gonna get every year. We left in the shift differential, that twenty dollars per pay period if they're assigned to a shift, and twenty-five dollars an hour if they're not assigned to a shift. So also, officers are assigned to that shift, so that's twenty dollars pay period for how many hours. That was easier to do, if it's somebody that gets called out at night to fix a broken water line, or a broken gas line, or whatever, more people, that is twenty-five dollars an hour, or twenty-five cents an hour, all their outwork, and that is equivalent to what the PD gives. We left the K nine in at a hundred and fifty dollars a month because of all the requirements that they have. Volunteer will stay in at forty dollars a month, but it will be eligible to everybody if they test, if they meet the meet requirements. Assistant city clerk I left in, and then I left in four other ones, heavy equipment operator, if they're certified on a piece of equipment, or if they have a C D L, that's what they would give for being a heavy equipment operator, that's sixty-five dollars a month. And a licensed applicator, we have to have somebody licensed to spray for seals. And so that needs to be covered.
To what?
To spray for the seals.
Oh.
You cannot spray the pesticides if you're not certified, and that certification will sell to that person brought with them when they came in. So we have to have that program with a spray for seals. So leaving those in, and with the heavy emphasis being on the tenure, and not being on the other side, if you put the A D plan together with these proposed stipends, then there are five employees that are negatively impacted. And I'll tell you why those five are negatively impacted. One is because they have merit evaluation, that they are still getting paid for the evaluation that was done three years ago, which needs to be taken off. Or they were on the upside down part of those tenure, you know, those tenure, they were here for seven years, and they were getting a hundred and fifty dollars a month, when somebody that had been here forty years was getting fifty dollars. And so there's four, there's four of those that were just back in, and one that was based on merit evaluation. All of those have merit evaluations, they were one covered, two. Most of it was a tenure, most big tenure, people who were a hundred and fifty most months, and they're here for six years. Putting all that together, then you're at fifty-nine of, fifty-nine of sixty-six employees are positively impacted, doing it that way. This, this if you take, now if you take the volunteer fire department out, that's gonna negatively impact, it's a negative, will negatively impact one. Three of them will still have, because they were low pay scale, and they go to a higher rate. So you did up to six. The total cost without the volunteer fire department is about fifty-three thousand, it's costing sixty-one thousand for stipends now, so it saves about seventy-eight thousand dollars a year. That's fifty-three thousand, we have thirty-five thousand left, and that's not budgeted right now. And so, my recommendation would be that we budget that, we put that extra money that we have that's not budgeted right now, into my line of four stipends. And then the rest of the salaries, like you did in 2015, we didn't have enough to cover 2016. Remember, we could budget it at one percent salary savings, which we're gonna get anyway, because if somebody does a no-call-no-show, and we just, they just went in to, just no-show for it, or it happens, you can't hire somebody that's a day, kind of advertised, wow, it's two, three weeks before you get a person. And so you have the salary savings in that period of time, that happens four or five days a year.
I have a question, how much is the overall cost, just for the stipend?
For the stipends totally, it is, it was, oh, just right around the bottom of that sheet.
Is that the sixty-one?
That sixty-one includes the volunteer fire department. So if you look at the bottom of each call, it tells you what they cost.
So if we, if we're just to do the stipends, that's how much it'll cost?
Right, sixty-one thousand.
Why is the volunteer?
Which is a total of seven thousand six hundred eighty. So you're looking at fifty-four thousand, right about fifty-four thousand, I think, I can tell you. Fifty-three, four hundred minus the volunteer.
Fifty-three, four hundred. How much does it cost per employee, thirty-eight thousand?
To add another employee, it costs thirty-eight, it's about thirty-eight thousand per employee after you do the, get the department up to the same level.
How much was the figure, a hundred and seventy-eight, was our figure?
Four, crystal, I'm gonna take it back, excuse me. Go back to that.
Hundred and eighty-six.
One more, right there. So adding two positions to Parks, it costs you a hundred and eight, adding Streets, two positions to Streets, it costs you ninety-two, adding two positions to Right Way, it costs you ninety-six, Finance, it costs you forty-two, to add one, a hundred and twenty, utilities. But, another thing, just keep it in mind, if you did just this, just a stipend, just new stipend plan, and added new employees, and just, I mean, the old stipend plan, there's more that would be negatively impacted, because a lot of people were negatively impacted with removing the old stipend plan, it was made up for with raises they were getting in the A D plan. And I don't know what the number would be, how many would be negatively impacted by that, I didn't calculate it.
One quick question, if we were to do the new stipend plan, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but could we always come back at the minute that did the budget, and, I mean, I suppose we do get behind the program, we can coffee, we can run it, you know, we have extra income coming in, so at that point, you think maybe we could possibly revisit this, this, and go back to the, maybe at that time and venture maybe the A D A D, or, I mean?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, once we have the revenue, then of course, we're, we're happy.
We'll be able, we'll have more money to coffee, we work with.
When, as soon as we got that, as soon as we get that, if they move forward with an angry to something, if we can negotiate something, and we bring it back, so they'll have to take it, they're, we'll have to bring it to you, obviously, if this, as soon as it's approved by both, then we know that payment is gonna happen on March first, or whatever, if we agree to. But yeah, immediately, we know we're gonna have that revenue, that fiscal year, we can sit down and change whatever.
And we'll probably have enough more funds as well to hire more employees at that time.
Oh sure, yeah, I mean, that would be, you know, again, just keep it in mind, let me get to my last one here, I have one more slide, go back. So, so keep it in mind here, so the initial position, that's neck and annihilation or pilot agreement, what a lot for standard positions, we know that, I mean, that's a chunk of money. We need to remember that these positions that we add, it costs more than just the salary benefits, and we also have other needs that we're gonna have to address as part of that too. Now remember, part of what we talked about, we still have a transfer from utilities to the general fund in this, in this budget, and that's one of the reasons we talked about this, now if we get the pilot agreement, and we can go do something else, annexation will work that much harder, and maybe that covers that as well. It may be sooner than later, that the pilot agreement is a possibility, I mean, that's why I told them, I mean, I wanna get this authorized Monday night, I wanna try and sit down this week, I want that thing to move right now, while, while they're thinking about it, they're seeing that we want that thing to happen right now. And then remember too, you know, if something happens in the pilot agreement, doesn't happen, it's not the end of the world, we're gonna get a hundred percent starting the year after for it, you know, so that, we know at some point, there's another trunk, you know, there's another trunkload of money coming in, that we can do some expansions though, but we know that's gonna happen, as well, I gave that back, we know that's gonna happen if the council approves that annexation, when council, that's what we do. So, you know, we know that, that's a possibility, but if we can get the pilot agreement, make some of the benefits this year, and so we can fix our password, that's what we do, so it's, you know, it's working, you know. I, I, one of the things we, other things we talked about this weekend, and I, you know, I wanna make sure I address this, you know, we, I agree, you know, when we, when we had to do what we had to do in the budget last year to balance, was just cutting those ten positions. And we did, we did talk about it, as soon as we get a chance, a bunch of people back out there, we need to do it. I've been here for two and a half years, by the time this budget's overall, been here three and a half years, and there's been nothing done for employees since I've been here.
I'm sorry, say that again.
There's been nothing done as far as salaries or changes to pay for employees since I've been here. The first year couldn't, the first year we just stopped here surviving, being a million and a half bucks short. The next year, we were still trying to balance out, to figure out, we didn't know what the bottom was gonna be, we didn't know the bottom, sales tax, we had no idea, we're just trying to survive. And I don't think we're surviving anymore, but I think now we're a little more, you know, we're a little more realistic, we know, we know there's gonna be more money this year than there was last year, because we have new areas in town. We know that there's a potential, there'll be a lot more money this year than there was last year, and if not, the year after, there's gonna be a whole lot more money than there has been, because, because of the annexations that have been done, and potential annexations that are hidden. So we, we see, we can see that that war chest is starting to grow each year, to allow us to be able to do more stuff. You know, I'm just, I'm sitting there looking at this report that she printed out, you know, the number of people that we've, we can print a report out of the system that tells us how many full-time employees we process each year, okay? That doesn't mean, that's not even have, that means how many, at the start of the year, how many were in the system, and how much turnover was there, times like this, and that number just keeps getting bigger and bigger. And those numbers right now are similar to the numbers we're in the local, because we have so many people coming to home, because they come here, and they get a little bit of a skill, or they get a little bit of awareness, and they leave, because they're gonna go make, you know, go make more someplace else. That's what concerns me as a manager, is we can have fifty people out there that are brand new, and that doesn't help us. You gotta have people that know where the water lines are at, know where the sewer lines are at, know, you know, they know those issues out there, and you only get that by retaining employees that you have, and keep it over here, because every, every day they're out there, they're that much more an asset for the, for the city. And so that's, I mean, as a manager, I mean, it's not really, that's always your biggest concern, is that your employees know what, where everything's at, know the issues out there, because you can't get that back, that constitutional knowledge, invaluable. So, you know what the costs are gonna be, you can go back to that stipend, get rid of all the costs. My first rodeo, I don't, I don't do this as a hobby, I do this professionally, I'm concerned about retaining what we have.
Just to be clear, team, on the, and we're using the budget, the last one, I guess, that we had was in attachment to the August thirtieth meeting.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and again, to be clear, the A D A D plan is in there.
Yes, it is.
And what, kinda the figure that we're talking about, the hundred and eighty, hundred and ninety thousand, and that's what's in play.
There's a hundred and sixty-five in the general fund, and thirty-something in the utility fund.
Yeah, right, total, but anyway, so.
So well, there's that, plus there was a little surplus left in the general fund, a little surplus left in the utility fund, plus based on the best option on the insurance that we got today, there's another seventeen thousand, because that insurance, that total cost is seventy thousand, or seventy thousand six sixty-six less than what we paid this year, which is the number we use for insurance as well.
Right, that's, so what we're looking at, if you choose that insurance company, and we have to go with our other excess revenues, we have about, if we did the A D A D plan, we have thirty-six thousand left.
Thirty-six thousand left.
If we did that, but, but if we took the A D A D plan out, we'd have about a hundred and ninety thousand to work with to pick and choose how to register that.
Correct.
Just, just one of those.
No, that's correct.
And then, I mean, we may have another eight thousand to continue what we do with the fire department side.
Correct.
I understand.
The meeting that I had with Sally and City, I believe Jeff said that he could appreciate that you could give him, are we giving him anything?
What we told was that six months, we had a recent agreement, we looked at it, that was the, that was the higher.
Yes, and that's what he agreed upon.
We didn't pick any commitments, other than we look at.
Six months.
It's not a big thing, we're just not gonna do it.
No, it's not, it's a big thing, we look at it in six months.
Yeah, we're gonna do it.
That's what we told, that's the, that's the higher, wasn't it six months, when we would look at it and decide at that point?
And the other question is, the transfer, I mean, you were trying to get rid of that, but we now have to do it again.
Well, we, we put it back in at the start, when we had to cut out those taxes, we put a little bit back out. Remember, we've gone from a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar transfer three years ago, to a hundred and sixty, I think, is the cash provision. So we've cut that way back. And if, if, if this thing happens, we second, we get a pilot agreement instead of annexation, we can use that to go across the highway and try to get, use that room to be out, to go across the highway and try to get retired for retirement. They're still out there, we know there's stuff out there that could fit down.
We, we, we know it. There's good things coming, hopefully, you know, and we can understand that. The other thing, the other question I had was, I think last time we had a workshop, we kinda talked about striking the balance between these three options. I don't know that we, I thought we could probably, I mean, I find a way to strike the balance between gaining double employees, Streets is the main area where, you know, we can get lots of employees, you know, anybody that's employed, it's people that are out in the streets, or the department, so they can more, they get out in the streets. Nutrition problem, that has been for those, it has occurred, mostly for those people who are making a lot of money, so that's why they're involved, or it's all the same. So, most of the issues that I'd like to see addressed, maybe we can do this. That's, that's why I was kinda talking more, you know, if we pair up and strike a balance, maybe we can, maybe we can't do the A D A D right now, but maybe we can do the seven eight, you know, maybe we can do something, just strike a balance, we can cover there. And then as the money comes in, we can go back to, and that's what I was talking about, we're not just thinking, let's figure a way to phase in what we want. But that's crazy, you know, let's, let's figure out, we don't have any more employees? We do any more employees, right? Every department has half of our employees. Our problem in the city right now, is we have an image, and we really want streets fixed, how we can fix streets. If we don't have employees, we're none of those expensive machines that we bought, that we've been sitting for long. You know, we've got, we've got to strike a balance here, because that's, that's what
That was one of the reasons why I was asking you in regards to the stipends, maybe, maybe we could give a stipend, but not the A D A D, and hire, you know, maybe a couple of employees, you know, and then come back and possibly amend it, if we advise it, you know.
Again, it's y'all's decision, I mean, I'm, you know, and ask for, to maybe try to strike a balance in there, with the knowledge of this potential step. We put stipends and the A D A D plan together, hoping that maybe in a month, we would have a second agreement, we could come back to a traditional ones. I would rather keep fifty-nine employees happy than hire two new employees that are not gonna know what they're doing, that are gonna have to be trained, that they're not gonna make, they're not gonna make that big a difference, that's not gonna make a big a difference, is it, for a bunch of employees that see that they're, they're appreciated. So from a management standpoint, I thought we put the three options, the three things that we heard again, but it's not my decision, again, I mean, it's your decision, you guys can do the setup too, and then we give that piece of paper off the hook.
And the total of the A D A D, I'm sorry, I'm late, is how much, what total?
One eighty-one, I think.
Hundred and eighty-one?
It's one sixty-five to the general fund, thirty-nine to the, thirty, two to the utility fund, and two thousand to the lottery.
What I look at here is the reward, you know, the risk reward, and so, we recognize the delicacy of the issue, and everything we talked about, I mentioned it very last time, new employees, the, the morality of the staff, and so, really, the only really variable we have today is what we're gonna do with this figure, one eighty, one ninety. So again, in my mind, and I think, I think we can go back and ask our department again, today, right now, what's more important, because I looked at our options, and I, and I hear, I completely understand, we gotta stack up, we got to, and that's, I'm hopeful that that's something we can do within the next thirty or sixty days, depending on what happens pilot, but again, the, the
But again, the, the reward, the, what is the benefit that we're gonna get out of a hundred eighty thousand dollars? And so if you split it up, and it, I, I believe these numbers are an accurate representation of what it would be like, you know, to do that. There, there's no doubt, if we hire individuals, we have to go up and bump some. So we're gonna benefit four, or five, or six, or seven employees at the expense of fifty. And so, I would like to hear from, from particularly Rudy and Ram, who, who's guys are the ones that we're talking about the most probably that are gonna be impacted by this. Would they rather have a staff with higher morale, or would they rather have two or three more hands? And, and then the, the, you know, then, then the other things, all the things that come into play is, you know, gearing those guys up. You know, they're still, in my mind, they're still a little bit of a unknown with that, because just the overall morale of the staff we have, so. I get it, I, I know the struggle that we all face with being the right decision here, but it is, what is going to bring us the best benefit for a hundred eighty thousand dollars? And that, that's where I live. It's, it's, I mean, how are we gonna address, it's fine, we can give people what they want, but how are we gonna address the fact that the ten dollar an hour employees are not gonna see much of a profit from this? At eighty percent, you know, that's, no, that's for the losing our, our, our staff, people that maybe fixed the problem. We need to get that done, because that's the biggest crisis that we get as a city is, we don't fix the streets. And we are fixing some streets, but there's a lot of need, there's just a huge need to get those streets fixed. So if we can, again, strike a balance between what you're saying and what I'm saying, I mean, you know, do we have to do eighty-eighty? Can we do seventy, seventy-nine? Because it's the naive of the, the, the workers that work out, uh, the streets as such. That's where the turnover is, that's, that's a problem that has to be fixed. And knowing that others are making, blocking, making money elsewhere, and, and they probably would, I think, they knew this could probably. But it's not like we're not gonna score, we're gonna say no forever, we're just gonna say, let's, let's try to, fix some of this a little bit, as much as we can, and then fix the rest of it as we get it done. Like everybody, a hundred percent is what I said last time, eventual. And, and one, that would be great. Because I think that would, that would be a positive, a lot of great things. A lot of great things that happened so far, and, and it's not that, I'm opposed to raises or anything like that, it's just, how can we phase it in so that we can address the issues that are before us, but still move towards the overall plan, which is getting everybody salaries, eighty or eighty-eight or whatever.
Can I come on that? But come to the street part, um, we hear about streets all the time, or you guys hear about streets all the time. We heard these people in here, you know, we, we brought an ordinance forward about trucks inside the city, because that's what caused a lot of damage, and it got amended, and now we're letting trucks in the city again, and that's no cause of damage to the street. But we heard these people sitting here and say, streets have been like this for thirty years. And if you look at what we've done in the last three years with the cars and streets, uh, we've, we've replaced four streets in, in the last year and a half that what's been done. We got the air suspension project, and that was gonna make a tremendous difference in the way the streets look in this town. I mean, they're, we've, we've done stuff with streets each year. There, I, we, if there's fifty steps out there and that much money, we could fix all the streets in this town when you're ready. But that, that infrastructure, essentially what we did, it was two hundred million dollars to fix all the streets. Two thirteen dollar an hour employees, they couldn't change that that much. I mean, that's, I'm just, there needs to be some reality, the reality in of all this. You know, in those years when there was three point five million dollars in sales tax, they could have fixed a bunch of streets those years. All that extra money could have been put into that, instead of hiring a bunch of ten dollar an hour employees, and what did they do? We don't even know what they did now. But they, they were here for a year, they were gone, and that money was all gone, but there was not a single street fixed in twenty fourteen.
And none of us were part of that.
No, I understand that, but what I'm, what I'm saying is, what I'm saying is, you know, we are doing, um, you know, it's not the argument that, the, the argument, the answer to, to why we're not getting more done with streets than what we already have done with streets, is all the stuff that we showed you up there, it's the twenty twelve bond, the way the twenty twelve bond's being paid, it's those things. We can't fix those things. But, you know, it's the ten dollar an hour employees that are losing, the last three employees I lost were not ten dollar an hour employees. They were highly trained employees that we had that left to go someplace else. Uh, and, and two of those in particular have put a burden on everybody else that's gigantic, that's now keeping us from doing all the other things that we need to be doing as well. So we could be sitting there trying to figure out how to get another, whatever, some, something to change. Now we're having to pick up what those people did, because they had years of experience, and left with those years of experience, and now it's getting scattered across everybody else, and that's what I'm afraid is gonna continue to happen. To the point where, well, I can go over here and work for this amount of money, and it's gonna give you just, you know, maybe, maybe, maybe two, two dollars an hour more, but I'm gonna have to put up with all that. But I'm gonna have to put up with, with every time I see a citizen that's complaining about a street that's been broken since, you know, ten years before I came to work here, or whatever, you know? That, that's the concern, is we're gonna start to lose the, not only those ten dollar an hour employees, we're gonna start to lose the others as well. But that's my concern. As a manager, that's my call, is to try to keep that happening.
And the relative thing is that, if everyone, uh, agency, you're gonna have a turnover. Because people are old, and they're not under the job, they're not committed, they're what, hard, hard stuff, you're gonna have turnover, right? We, we, we will have turnover, it's quiet raises, we will have turnover eventually, but it's gonna happen.
It's gonna happen, sorry.
I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm a swell, you know, I'm, I'm all for getting raises, you know, giving raises and all, uh, but on the eighty-eighty, uh, some of these increases are horrendous. I mean, outrageous, eighteen thousand dollars raise, sixteen thousand dollar raise, ten thousand dollar raise. I, I just don't get that, I mean, I'd much rather do, I mean, give it where it's deserved, you know? I mean, I mean, I don't, I mean, that's, that's huge, I mean.
Sure is.
It, it's absurd.
Let me give you one example, there's one example at the top of your sheet right there. The person that's in that job is the lowest paid person in that position in the state of Texas. It's embarrassing, is what it is. That person has saved the city twelve thousand dollars. And what that person, when that person was brought in to that job, um, that person was brought in at half the rate of the person that was in that job before, because there was no money left. Um, so, a person that works in a little town with seven hundred people has the same job, making more money than that person. So yeah, there are some that are larger than others, but it's because of the disparity, because there was not a salary, so that a little bit of time was done. That should have never been done, but the person in that job before made forty-five thousand dollars a year.
And a better observation would be of how much you're underpaying that person in that position as compared to other cities or other communities. It would be, so, why are we paying them so much less than what other people are paying for the same position? That would be a better observation than that outrageous number, this is how much, or exactly, just to give some.
You just look at it, I mean, it, it looks outrageous, I mean, you know, I mean, it's absolutely absurd, you know, and they think that's absurd.
It's absolutely absurd, that person's underpaid compared to everyone else around them.
Yeah.
That was, that, you're on the wrong time.
Just to give some perspective, we just lost an employee from municipal court, who was a certified clerk, and right now we have a part-time judge. So you only have clerks and assistants to take care of all of municipal court, which is a lot to handle. Procedurally, you have to follow legislative updates, and there's a lot that comes tied into it, and you just lost a certified clerk, which was a huge asset to the community. And all because she wasn't raised, which she probably didn't get paid. If the eighty-eighty proposal would have been in place, you would have kept that position for her, because she would have been getting paid the exact same of her competitor. So you're moving employees that are certified and actually bring value to the position versus, and it doesn't mean that, if you do go with the eighty-eighty now, it doesn't mean that you can't still add one or two employees down the road, maybe in March, when you do see that additional budget increase. So that would be a better perspective to look at it, instead of the other way around. I think, uh, what Ben Briscoe said regarding the best benefit with that amount of money would be to keep everyone already happy, and pay everyone what they should be paid, and then readdress adding more employees, one or two, whenever you have the money to do that.
Yeah, manager. One of the things too, that, that, what we could do, you know, this salary survey comes up, it has a lot of issues, and I guess just through my vocation, I've had the benefit of working with those, and, and the comfort that I have is I trust the numbers. And so, I don't, I don't look at that, and, and, and Robert, I do understand it is a big increase, but what it tells me, and, and this is what I would defend of the citizen that hit me up on the street, you know? Whatever that represents, man, that person got fifty or sixty percent of rate, how do you justify that? Well, because the unfortunate thing is, that person was hired at substantially less than market rates, and again, we're not taking a hundred percent of what's marketed, that's, that's a hundred percent of what's average. You know, that's not a hundred percent of high, a hundred percent of low, that's a hundred percent of the average. And so by taking a twenty percent off reduction, you know, I am completely comfortable in fitting those actions, and so. But the objective here too, and whether we go seventy, seventy, or eighty-eight, or whatever it is, it's still, to those that are facing that big inequity, it's a big number. And so therein lies the, the value of establishing a schedule that's equitable with the market. And we've, we've gone round and round, it's like, well, we're not like this city, amen, I concur, that's what we're looking at, a percentage. And so, it, it, I, I just, I have the benefit of trusting the survey. And so, when it showed that number, it seemed, wow, we're, we're really inequivalent with these people. And, and I hear what the manager's saying, and I, and I know what's gonna happen to us if we lose guys at the top. Um, and we're, we're, I mean, I s, I see it with already the laws of the day, I, I see what is happening to us, and so, uh, again, I'm, I'm not gonna, we'll spur that horse, but we need to look at how we can best utilize that money to, to, to benefit of most people. And, and if, if we get hung up on picking and choosing, then we're gonna create inequities. We have inequities, and that's not about, that's how we're gonna end up. And, and, I mean, just, just for, just, you think that these rises, the big increases are the, the overall factors, and those people that are gonna lose money because of this? You know, some people are gonna lose money according to this, and then some people are gonna get one thousand. Is that gonna boost morale for everybody, or is it gonna hurt some people as well? So how can we strike the balance? My words, and, and not have anybody losing money at least, and, uh, try to get everybody some money. Move, move some people that are, like, get forty percent or sixty percent, or whoever, close to eighty, but they may not have it, so then we can have everybody included in this. And eventually, we're gonna get money, right? So we're gonna be able to bump everybody up. I just, I mean, it seemed like last meeting that everybody was, was talking, you know, the people that were talking, uh, said that there was a low morale, and it is assumed that low morale is only because of your pay. There are probably other factors, above with it, it's probably less, it's probably based in a workplace, if there's low morale, there's, there's more than one factor. That may not be, make us more than pay. But I, I, I hate to see for us to go eighty, and then all of a sudden, we've got more operations, other, other places. Good, kind of, gotta work with everyone, get something, and, uh, figure it out somehow. So that maybe we, we can't do eighty percent on everybody right now, but we can maybe get everybody bumped up, and then eventually get everybody eighty, and we're gonna get money.
Well, how do you differentiate who gets what?
Well, you don't, you don't get differentiated. You people are losing the money right now.
Who's losing?
The people that are watching the award. Oh, and we're losing money in a lot of streets. Well, then, then we're standing, uh, they're gonna get out of the office, and also take it from most, eighty or ninety. They've done a lot of work, uh, I mean, there's a lot of work to do.
One, two, three, oh, those are the negative in the impact.
And we need any more employees, right? That's, that's the cost, really, it's, it's not that we don't wanna get to the eighty-eighty, but we do wanna get there. But how do we strike the balance between, how do we say employees, because there's gonna be some that are losing, and some are not getting anything? I realize some are, are waiting down right now, well, you know, we can do something for them as well, but maybe we can't do the whole thing right now, we can, you know, I, I figure it out.
Yes, Kayla.
First thing I want to say, thank you, sir. You obviously put a ton of work into these numbers. These kind of figures don't just pop up in there, so thank you for the whole staff. As a manager, to rest, balance all of this, business owner, to rest, balance all of this. I've always found that it's, it's a lot harder to replace high skilled people than it is to replace low skilled people. And the purpose of people talking about people that are on the streets, working the streets, don't have the time, and don't have this, the certifications, don't have the, uh,
Skill set.
The education to put in. That's why they're in that job.
Mayor, I'd like to make a correction, there.
Skill set.
It's a different skill set.
It's a different skill set?
It is a skill set, and everyone has a high skill set.
And someone who has to hire and fire, there are skill sets that are easy to find, and there are skill sets that are not easy to find. The people that we've lost, the last three people we've lost are skill sets that are not easy to find. And we can't continue that. The, the, uh, skill sets for the people working in the streets are, and it's simple, I'm not trying to diminish what they have, but if there's no one to direct it, then this is chaos. I'm also comfortable with the numbers that you've put in here, especially with what we're looking at in just a short amount of time with added revenue. I don't, I don't think there's any reason we probably can't do this.
Manager, I think, Kayla, now, did, you landed, perhaps, trying to, the medium on here, looking at these numbers, and just looking at it, and try to, try to find some common ground between all of us. Again, to try to, you know, make it as equitable as possible to, to comment. It looks like it would take about five thousand dollars to bring the negatives on this, uh, on this eighty-eighty sheet up to a positive, so that,
That's what I'm saying.
So that that's a hundred percent. And, and we could do that, again, by taking away the, the, uh, the stipends for the four firefighters. That's gonna create a bigger number, so, because one is a little close to breaking, so anyway, by my rough numbers, about five thousand. And so perhaps we could do that, and perhaps that would make, if that number would be a hundred percent, those folks are, are benefited to the good, instead of going backwards. The other thing that, that I would think is, we've, we've been looking at this salary survey for probably sixty, seventy, eighty days, and, and I would hope that after tonight, I mean, we've seen these numbers, and we, and we know, we all have our opinion on those, but those numbers don't change, but we, we need, I, I just feel like we need to get past that there's, e, e, either, either scrub it, or get past it, well, these guys just get a small, and these guys just get a large, because that's, that's what it's always been, you know? But it is, it's the survey that says, this is what the average is for X, Y, Z. And so, that's what we're basing it on, and part of the equation is going back to a schedule. And if, if, if it needs to be seventy, seventy, I mean, whatever they need to do, that we're all comfortable with, but, but we need to establish something. But I, but again, I think we just look at those numbers and think, this figure's not enough, and the other figure's too much. And, and I don't know, I don't know what to say other than it is what it is, you know, that, that's what the salary survey says. And short of us hiring someone to do it in an extremely, in an extreme. And short of us hiring someone to do it at an extreme, at an extreme cost, we need to utilize those numbers, set those numbers, and then it's something we can get every year. I mean, a T and L, a T and L, they come in every year, so. I would just, I would hope that at least, if nothing else tonight, we can move past that.
One second.
Well, I think, two things, what you, the numbers, we, those are twenty sixteen numbers too, I mean, it's our twenty eighteen, it was a twenty sixteen number, because we don't pay to participate in the survey, so we can't get the current year. So those are, those are, those numbers are already two years old, we're looking at eighty percent of a year ago, so it's probably seventy-five percent already. The second thing to remember, the, the second thing I want to point out is, if, whatever number, if you wanna choose seventy, seventy, that's fine, but you can't choose seventy, seventy, and then pick one department and make them ninety, that's what got us where we're at. So you can't say, well, you know, we wanna go with seventy, seventy, but we wanna pay these guys extra over here, in this department. If you're gonna, if you're going to say that this department is more valuable to the city than this department, then there's no sense in doing salary plan. The whole purpose of the salary plan is to make sure, based on the skills, on the knowledge, on the, whatever, across the board, what everybody looks at for what they require, non-skill abilities are in that position, that's what they pay. So if we're gonna say, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna do that for some departments, and for some departments, we're gonna pay them for something else, we're, we're, we're not fixing the problem, we're just creating a bigger problem. Now, one of the things that you, that you could consider in there though, is if you wanna look at, at seventy, seventy, or whatever you wanna look at, just remember, which, what you need to remember is that that salary plan, so if, if the salary plan is a seventy, seventy, and that person that's making, and that seventy, that seventy salary is twelve dollars an hour for that job, somebody that's in that job at fourteen leaves, the new person comes in, wanting to start it, that's the baseline for everybody to start, that's, so we're equitable and fair, and, and the things that happen where if you were somebody's friend, you got paid twice as much as somebody else, it's not happening. And that's, that's the whole purpose, is this gets established by ordinance, and that's what I point forward, that's the way it's done. So that you guys are operating like every other city around, and not just, well, we got this much, whatever, we're gonna do this, this person got hired at a different time, so they make five dollars an hour more because they knew somebody, that's what we're trying to get away from.
No, we don't want that, we want equitable pay.
And I agree with that, but if, what I'm, and I'm gonna say it's not only another way to say it, so I'm just gonna say it, if you are, if you're, if in that equitable pay, you're gonna say that one job is more important than another, that's a big decision. Because they're all very important.
I'm saying that, one of the, one of the things that I had asked is that, if we look at the salaries of some of these positions in our area, I had looked at maintenance street worker salaries in our area, and I think they're already making twenty thousand a day, and I think there are other cities in our area here where maintenance street workers make one five, one six. And that's where, that's, you know, that's where I'm getting at, because I, I, I've seen over the last few years that in streets departments, it's usually freezes, this, uh, this year, it's freezing. So that's, 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 that's another one, I mean, the state, the T and L average is twenty seven, only eight in that, in that position. And eighty, I think, we'll get to twenty, twenty one?
Twenty, maybe twenty two, something like that.
Twenty four? To get up to twenty two.
But, that's the all, that's the lowest level in the streets. What you're, what, what, what you're missing when you look at that, we also have a CDO operator that's at twenty thousand, he, he, his is different, because he goes to a different classification. So what you're seeing on there are those, those, there is...
The lowest paid, and that's what I looked at, another, say, the lowest paid maintenance street maintenance.
And so if they're at twenty five, they're probably doing ninety percent. That's probably sitting at ninety percent. And we've got cities all around us, Pleasanton, Durtton, I mean, the cities around us that are similar to us, that's what they're trying to do, is get to a hundred percent, so they probably are paid a little bit more. But they're not just doing ninety percent, certain departments are doing it across the board, so it's fair across the board. But, you're, yeah, it's your decision, I mean, I'm not, I, I'm not gonna sit here and recommend departments between a different other departments. Because given the day, all the directed work for me, I expect the same for each one of them, I don't expect more from one than I do from the other. And so I'm not gonna sit there and say that one department is more important than the other department is very important, will be. And I'll tell you, if you wanna know which department's most important, why do you turn the backs up, you know, which person's most important? But it's, it's how somebody fixes the street, somebody that rests back, that's how they fix the toilet, I mean, depending on the day, you know, which one's more important.
I mean, we're not, we're not, you know, I'm, I'm gonna, from this, you know, when you first introduced this to us in June, I think it was in June, you, you said, whatever you guys wanna do, because it's sixty, eighty, seventy, ninety, whatever you guys wanna do. You didn't voice what you're doing now, I think you want all departments to be treated equally.
I sure did say that it was unequal, I mean, it was across the board, it was a plan for it. And if you wanna go sixty percent across the board, that's fine, I don't, I mean, that's, that's your choice. But if you go sixty percent across the board and say, well, we want these employees to be paid at this rate above that, I think that's, 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 that's what got us where we're at right now, right? Without the equitable.
This, 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 this last meeting is first time that we've kind of been hearing that. Because, I mean, what we heard is, we could do sixty for this group, and eighty for that group, or whatever, whatever you guys wanna do, what we heard back then. My, my, my contingent still, the fact that, you know, we can get there, how are we gonna address some of the issues that are at the worst? The thing that I have question on is, what percentage of the money is made available to the departments that's put into the...
A body of budgets?
What percent of the budgets that are made to be made available to the departments? And, and at what point?
At what point? Maybe this way to think about it is, you take a job, you're working for the school, and you're gonna make forty thousand a year, and you start on January first, on January first, can you go around and check for forty thousand dollars? No, you can't, because you haven't made any money yet. So we have a lot of budget based on all these revenues coming in during the course of the year. The revenues don't all come in on October first, sales taxes come in every month, we get a portion of it every month as we go through the year. Our annual taxes, we get the majority of it by January. We still get payments all the way through this one year, we're gonna pay, we're gonna pay on this one for some small amount of tape or cloth, but the majority of it comes in, and, again, majority of it comes in December, January, we do get some in November because they get discounted in there. But we have fixed costs regardless of what we're taking in, and that has to be paid, salaries have to be paid, lights have to be paid, all those things have to be paid. So we have to look at those, because you're getting back to the money for the streets. Those are big line items that we have in the budget, and we may not have been the money for them until July, honestly, we may not have, because we gotta pay the bonds, we gotta pay the lights, we gotta pay salaries, we gotta pay insurance, we gotta pay all those things, I pay fuel for police cars, and all that stuff's gotta get paid in October, November, December, January, February, you don't get to push that off to the end of the year. So some of those larger line items that we have in there, we don't have to handle, sorry. I can't, I can't, in October, so maybe we have fifty thousand dollars in here for the streets, that's gonna fix streets right now, because I don't have that money. Just like, at the start of the year, I know how much money I'm earning during the course of the year, and there may be things I wanna do, like want vacation, or do something else, but I gotta pay all those bills and everything upfront, so you put a little, put away a little bit each month until you say, oh, that's, we'll do that. And so it's the same way with us, we don't, October first, we have zero dollars, zero, at the start of the year. And we're gonna get two sales, and we're gonna get a sales tax check in October, we may get some late revenue from something else, somebody pays their, their, whatever, sales tax later, or somewhat non-sales tax. We get somebody to pay their property tax, property sales, and the taxes get paid on that, or whatever, but we're not gonna get a truckload of money in January, in, in October, because we already know, we may get a late franchise payment or something like that. November, December, we're gonna get a little bit more, but we gotta pay all these other bills until we get, until we get that built up. Knowing that in March, we got a gigantic bond payments to make in March, and it's a payment, we're gonna have another bond payment to make in September, so...
And getting front balance for last year was fifty?
Fifty, uh, ended up at forty, what was it?
Forty nine?
Forty one, forty two, something like that.
What, what do we expect from front balance for the year?
Well, we're hoping that it was gonna be somewhere around four hundred thousand, but the H U B thing changed it up. So we're ho, we're hoping that we're gonna see somewhere around two hundred fifty. We got our last sales tax, uh, payment two days ago, it was about, so we ended up surpassing our sales tax projections by about forty seven thousand, I think it was. We got about forty seven thousand more than we projected, so we know we get revenues at a hundred percent, it's gonna be about a hundred and one percent on revenues than what we projected. We know we're gonna be under this finisher, so it's just a matter of seeing what, so that, like, we'll still build a perimeter on what exactly we're gonna be, but we're hoping it's somewhere around four hundred.
The other option, uh, the, just starting out, if, you know, you decide not to do the eighty, eighty, is giving everybody, like I said before, the flat, across the board raise, and then keeping the stipends, and then when the, in the event we get the money from STEC, we can end, at that point, implement the eighty, eighty, subtracting...
Good.
Yeah.
Just, if we keep in the existing stipends, I mean, that's...
Not existing, the...
The new ones.
The new ones.
Um, I mean, that's, that, yeah, I mean, you actually do that, isn't it?
That's fifty six thousand.
That's fifty six thousand, is what that costs.
That's what I was suggesting.
So, what, what just, okay, just, just so it's clear, the number of employees that are gonna see a decrease in there, if you just go with that stipend plan without the eighty, eighty, there's more employees in cities, because some of those employees had an increase in the eighty, eighty plan that offset part of those, those previous stipends So if you have an employee that got a tenure stipend, and got a merit stipend, and got something else, and now they're losing all those stipends, and they're gonna get a tenure stipend. So that, if they were in that middle group that was getting a hundred and fifty dollars a month for being here six years, now their tenure stipend is gonna go to seventy dollars a month. So there's a ninety dollar difference right there, but if they were in the eighty, eighty plan, and they had an increase in eighty, eighty plan, that offset that. Without the eighty, eighty plan, it'll offset, so now they would be short, compared to what their base position. That's why we put both of them together, to try to offset, maybe, try to offset anybody negatively at that point.
And can we do the eighty, eighty without anyone being negatively affected?
If you drop the stipends completely?
That's the only way to do it.
If you do the eighty, eighty, and you drop the stipends, there are a number of, there might be police departments, because that's what the majority stipend bill.
You possibly do a hundred dollars across the board, a lot, twelve hundred dollars per employee.
And the rest are still, they're still gonna be, they're, they're, you need to be along with that stipend.
You say something?
Maybe we can wait until we get dollars.
No.
We'd work too hard to wait.
Give them something.
But if you guys have that full worksheet, I'll count. Okay. Okay. Okay, so if you went, if you went with a seventy, seventy plan, it reduces the cost from a hundred and eighty-five to sixty one thousand, it only positively impacts one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve people.
When you increase them.
Are there some that's involved in our net impact? Most of it does. That would be a difference of a hundred thousand dollars, but then I don't know, we'd have to go back and put the whole thing together and figure out what you have to do with stipends to make it up. So if there's not a bus negatively impacted, it's probably moving the previous stipends.
No, 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 we did, uh, we did the eighty percent plan, and, you know, I mean, kinda walking, walking a typeper here, and I think we all feel that, um, we feel like that there's some good things that are gonna happen next year, again, the makeup and utilities and that kinda thing, but about it, we said, you know, we're pretty comfortable, depending on what we do with insurance, that we're gonna have thirty thousand dollars left. Again, again, looking at the eighty percent plan, we've got a big percent of the employees impacted positively, we can go back and correct those five that aren't. But then with the thirty thousand dollars left, we can budget simply, I mean, sixty one thousand less of our budget's fifty-four, we can budget half a year's stipends, and say, we will revisit this in March. And just let everybody know, we've got enough funds to make stipends for half a year, and look and see what, what happens. Again, you know, we've all looked at the numbers, and I think, I think the horizon is bright, it's pretty bleak right now, because there's a few unknowns, but, but we think five, six months down the road, it's gonna be, you know, we're gonna bring it, we're gonna be in pretty good position with our sales tax, with our, with our fund balances, you know, so, I don't know, that's something that we could probably consider. And again, what I have picked up is, we've gotta balance the budget right now, but we can get information three or four weeks from now that can allow us to go and make an amendment. And we can, we can move this down the road a little bit until we see more of a picture of what's coming. And, and again, you know, perhaps just, just to prove half a year for a stipend, and make it fall within our budget, and then we have time to go back.
Or, yes, that can be done, or we, the, the stipends can be budgeted, but we'll just look at the extra that's left over in salary savings, or that's what we did in twenty sixteen. So it'll be, because you have to pass a balanced budget, and so you don't want those, putting them in there, but then expiring on March thirty first is kind of, when we get to, I mean, it's, it's still balanced, if you say they expire March thirty first, unless we get to make a budget, I mean, you can do that.
Sure. And then that, you know, funding them with salary, to say, well, that, I mean, it's obviously gonna happen, I mean, as you said, you know, you're gonna lose employees, and that's accurate, we don't know what that's gonna be, or what that'll look like, but, you know, I just think, we're not, we're not kicking the can down the road, we're just moving it down to where we have a little clearer picture of what we're gonna see, you know? But I just, I didn't really feel like in March next year, we're gonna, it's gonna be a little brighter.
I'll still be waiting for March.
Say that again?
I'll just wait before March.
Wait before, oh, you're hoping it's wait before March.
But those, those are the three, you know, the thing, thing we talked about last week, the variables, I mean, there's other little issues, but really, it's, it's the insurance, which I think we've got, got handled, but then the salary, the employees, how we're gonna, how we're gonna do this. Mayor, can we ask the department's head if they've got a comment?
You just ask them.
You guys have a comment?
He's asleep.
Sacrificial lamb.
I've been there.
All right. All right, what's the question? What you're telling is? What, i- is, I mean, I mean, everybody's focused on their own department, obviously, but with, with, with the funds at hand, what is more morale, more valuable, a, an employee, a new employee, or morale?
It has to be, have to be morale. The way it is right now, by just talking to these guys and listening to them, there's gonna be help punch, and we're gonna be leaving.
So all those plans that you have about doing the streets, and doing this, and doing that, do what's a solution to morale?
M R A's? M R A's, we're not, we're gonna lose people, I guarantee it. That's gonna be just directed to the work, like it was years ago, when I first started.
be leaving.
So, all those plans that you have about doing streets and doing this and doing that, do what's a solution to morale?
MRAs? MRAs, we're not, we're gonna lose people, I guarantee it. That's gonna be just directed to the work, like it was years ago, when I first started.
This is pretty same thing, our work is gonna be, have to be up there doing the work, doing the battle, and really, I'm already pretty retired, which I, I do not want. I love my work, I love to be here, but nothing goes up, I'm not a candidate, it's gonna be hard for me to stay.
Do you have a question?
Um, just, I'm listening to everyone, uh, I know what, I know what my department needs, um, but, uh, I, I try to run my department like a family, I mean, I really do, I know a lot of my guys, um, but I'm also part of this family and the city as one team, and if, if it's beneficial to, to more than, I mean, you know, I, I understand, and we'll find a way to, we'll find a way to get it done for you, like we always have, so, whatever benefits the most, uh, I won't stand in the way of that.
Let Josie wash shit a little.
Um, yeah, so, pretty much the same as everybody else, I mean, it's heartbreaking to hear that, so, raises, pretty much.
Merrick, I clarify a couple things real quick. So, this was the, the meeting that was advertised to pass the tax and pass the budget.
Yeah.
But, when you guys passed the tax, that's great, we got that done, um, but, uh, we also advertised Wednesday as a follow-up, so, reality is, you can give direction, either what you wanna do, and, I mean, we have an item D to discuss and consider adopting, but it obviously is not ready to adopt, um, so, then that item, the, the, the discussion could be to table that, um, and do this, and be ready for Wednesday, um, the, we need to table all where, because we're already timed, but that, because this was the one that was advertised, and maybe by doing that, everybody that's here knows that Wednesday's the next time. Um, you can recess tonight if you wanna talk, if you wanna, to table that and, um, provide answers to what you wanna do, you can recess tonight and come back tomorrow, probably we don't have the insurance RP on the agenda to Wednesday, so we couldn't approve the budget tomorrow night, I guess we could, uh, with a number in it, and, and approve that afterwards, that's a good path, okay? So, so, bottom line, I guess the final result tonight is, when you get item D, we need a motion to table with whatever we're gonna do, so you can have it ready on Wednesday.
We're still in workshop?
Yes, we're still in workshop. We can table with the, go on with the eighty-eighty, I just don't want anyone negatively impacted.
Do we have to close the workshop in the morning, item D?
No, we still in workshop now.
We're just gonna worship, we ask questions, whatever, I mean, or I'm just gonna say that now, because I don't know, make sure my, my work, well, the, the game is, like.
So, we, we still.
In the workshop.
If we can't come to a consensus, we can still.
Well, you can't, we're not voting tonight, we just giving him direction.
No, the only thing to vote on is after you come out of the workshop, you're gonna vote to table adoption of the budget, uh, but that, but we need to know where to point, and so in that, you do get to vote, and so you can table until the budget has this, this, and this, until these things are done, or, or with these, we want, we're tabling until, uh, the next, until Wednesday meeting, and in the, in the final budget, we wanna see this, this, and this, and that way we know what to put in there, so we can about how it is, because you can take action on that, you can actually vote off tabling for those reasons, and then put in the direction in there to, to, to finish it the way you wanna finish it. I mean, if you don't know what that is yet, then that's fine, you can table till Wednesday, with the fact Wednesday, the rocks again, and try to figure out Wednesday night, and the next, you gotta end, you're gonna have to be Wednesday, so that'll be time.
And, and again, in consideration to be, we'll, we'll, we'll have the insurance.
Wednesday, that, no, the insurance RP is on the agenda for us to be prepared.
Yes.
It's, um.
I heard y'all, uh, talking about cutting stipends for the fire, guys that are responding to fires, I'm not sure if I was right in that, for the city, uh, anyway, before the stipends, uh, I had one or two guys during the day, and, I mean, that's, I mean, that's saying a lot, two guys, uh, and now, you know, there's at least five guys that I can depend on that, that are making calls, uh, with the city, uh, they come out and, uh, you know, I don't have to worry about not having enough guys during the day, so.
Are those guys city employees?
They are city employees.
Yes.
Everybody works during the day, and it's hard, you know, uh, for a regular employee to take off now, uh, so, you know, I depend on these guys a lot, and so, something.
So, we can just table it?
We're just still, I mean, we're still in the workshop, so if you have any questions, we'll, whatever, guys.
Other questions?
So, under the, uh, stipend plan, you know, maybe the people who are current on stipends, do they lose stipends?
Yes.
Okay.
It's only four. Well, so, if you just look at, like, at what we're doing, what was in stipends in twenty fifteen, and just the stipend plan without the eighty-eighty is more, uh, because what we also looked at was, okay, so, here's what they got in stipends, so when you look at that spreadsheet that I gave you, the first, the, over there under, uh, current stipend, it tells you how much they get monthly, and how much they get annually, so that annual amount, column down, is how much everyone's employees gets annually, that's like, um, then it include, then it shows you if they get an increase out of the eighty-eighty plan, and then it shows you what the difference is, and so some, uh, have stipends right now, uh, they don't get an increase in eighty-eighty plan, because they've been here long, they're, they've been here a long time, or, or, um, so there's a difference, so then, then we add in the new proposed stipend plan, and said, okay, once we do that stipend, are they get, are they that negative or positive? And so there was, let's see, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, um, so, no, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty employees total, if you get away with the whole stipend plan, just get the new stipend plan without the, the, the eighty-eighty plan, there'll be twenty if we pull down here.
Cause the stipend that, that's currently in effect is about fifty-eight thousand dollars, right?
It is fifty, you know, sixty-one thousand.
Sixty, sixty-one.
Oh, it's his name?
It's very close, yeah, the two numbers are very similar. I think the image is dead.
No, it's tracking.
Updates.
Any other questions on the workshop? Comments, that we'll move on to item D, or we gotta close the workshop, you got a question?
I just, I'm concerned about the negatives, uh, no one should lose money.
And, and I agree with that, to the most part, but there are some that they should, because if they got a merit increase for a single year, and they're still getting that pay, that should be them. Um, there were people in that year, in twenty fifteen, that gave merit increases for evaluation that they got three, so they're still getting paid for evaluation, they got three years ago, when other employees were not, I, 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 that year.
So, they didn't get any evaluation?
No, no, I don't know if they made table or not, but if we're gonna pay merit to one, it should be paid to everyone, it shouldn't just be paid to certain ones that were given a merit evaluation that year, because they were given, because they were part of the group that got evaluation.
So, all five of these were merit?
No, I'm not saying all five, one of them was one, there was a merit evaluation, the other ones, um, one of those ones that's negative, um, was a police officer that's getting three thousand dollars a month in stipends, or three thousand dollars a year in stipends, um, one of those was, and two of those were, no, the rest of them were the, were those individuals that had been here in that five, six, seven year range, they got the huge tenure payment, which was seventy-five dollars a pay period, when the people that had been here forty years had twenty-five dollars a pay period. And so, those are the ones, they were upside down on the tenure, and there was a small group of them that were in that mode, that were upside down on the tenure, so it makes a big difference, so they may have went from, um, and one particular that's been here seven years now, that was getting that big tenure, so, uh, under the current stipend plan, it would be seven, twenty a year, where before it was like, um, before it was twelve hundred a year, so that's a five hundred dollar difference in the tenure in sum. Does that make sense?
Yes.
I just want to, um, I just want to start with a concern I'm having, I've, I've been coming to these meetings, um, and the city manager has been trying to recommend a certain way of doing our things, um, and I, and that, obviously, as well, correct me if I'm wrong, but the things that are, are, as, the way it appears to be going, how we are running the staff in terms of compensation, it may have some implications, maybe in terms of employment law, where it's saying that some have stipends, you know, some have, is some, someone's supposed to have stopped, and they are still being, others are not, you know, it, it's suggesting some kind of discrimination, you know, I'm not saying any of the staff is gonna, they may take it up because of the morale that we've been having on, and from the staff part of my background, you know, in a, the performance management, you know, that we do in MBA, cohesion, cohesion, team cohesion is very key, if you have low morale, it can destabilize team cohesion, and you're not gonna get a performing team, a team is not gonna perform, and that's, that is where we are, and we are at the brink of losing a performing team. So, I would suggest we concentrate on holding on to what we have to be able to get what we want, and, and I believe, um, Brown and other people have said things like that, but I just want to reconfirm what they are saying, it's not like it's theory, it's something that will happen, if we don't hold on to what we have, um, the way we will even lose it, we may not have project there if they lost, because of this angle I'm talking about, the potential for someone who is disgruntled so much to now say, hey, even this person has been on this, you know, and then they, if someone should come and do an audit trail of how the staff is being compensated, a lot of things are gonna be exposed, and I'm thinking the city manager is trying to make sure that doesn't happen, because, like he keeps saying as a manager, that's what he should do, to make sure people are treated fairly, and this is, you know, one way of treating them fairly, you can never get a hundred percent like, uh, Mr. Hernandez is saying, that some people will still be, you know, on, on the wrong side of it, obviously, it will not be cut out, it will not be hundred percent, but what is the majority, which is why he gave us a percentage of eighty percent or ninety percent would be positively affected, anybody who looks at that objectively will say that's a good plan, as opposed to the way it is right now.
Thank you. So, guys, you don't think, going with the eighty-eighty plan, um, plus finding funds that no one would be affected negatively, that, that's not something we can do?
Budget-wise, that is something we can do.
Right, so.
Right, I mean, uh, we need, we need to make sure that we get, well, we do get, you know, we get, you know, we need to make sure that we state what we said, that you're, oh, which is, when that employee.
Well, yeah, that would be the step, like you say, phase in, next thing we would do, if we get the STEC money, we can, that's when we can add, we can add employees, because we've already compensated the ones that's been here, making minimum, you know, making their salaries since twenty fifteen.
We, we gotta add employees where it counts, I mean, they all count, they all count, but the city is looking at you.
The streets would probably be the first.
Looking at all of us, and they're complaining about one thing, and that's because we don't have enough manpower out there, not because the guys are, took their jobs, because they ain't, we don't have enough manpower out there, and those trucks that we spent half a million dollars on, two trucks are sitting, because we can't use them, for some reason, we haven't used them in a long time, they haven't been out, uh, so we gotta get those things rolling.
I agree, I agree, and that's, that's what we can do.
Well, we can't wait, we need, we need, we need to, we need to move.
Well, you need to compensate what's already here, because if you, you hire new people, you're going to lose, you're gonna have rookies out there, you know, who's gonna train them? You know what I'm saying? You gotta take care of what's already here, you have to take care of the employees that have worked, stayed here working without a raise since twenty fifteen, you take care of them, they're more motivated to hire the new guys that we're gonna bring in less than ninety days. It's the winter coming up, you know, um, perfect time to hire and train, because it's not a lot you can do, yeah.
There's a lot, we need to.
I know, there's a lot, but that's.
We just don't have the funds until June, so could we possibly roll over some of that two-hundred-and-fifty thousand into streets?
Well, I, I wanted to see what it is, I wanted to see what number we have.
Yeah, let's see.
I was about to, the, you talked about reserve money, I wanted to.
Well, I, I, yeah, I mean, you're like amen and amen and amen, but, I mean, that, the real issue, as I see today, is, is employees' benefits, employees' salaries, and those other things are critical, but the obstacle we're facing in front of us is what to do with employee, if, with salaries of employees, and those, those other things, again, aren't critical, and I, I mean, I hate to speak for everybody, I'd like for everybody to make a comment, but I think we're all saying amen, as soon as we see a light at the end of the day that we've got room, we'll bring on the staff, I mean, I think.
And streets is what we need to address first, they need four employees versus.
What about not bringing?
About, as soon as we have money, we'll bring on the staff.
Merrick, I, uh, one, one, one thing, I want to say in particular, if, if you go to something you're saying, I don't think you're saying it the way, I don't think you're meaning it the way you said, we, but I just want, I want to clarify, we need additional positions, we don't necessarily, we're not talking about the positions that we had before, bringing back that same position, because we cut positions and combined departments to, to do things, but we need, we need to actually see the L drive, that's something we didn't have, so that's an additional position, but it's not bringing back what we have, it's not bringing back the position we had before.
It's additional manpower.
Right, okay, so, so, look, I mean, that, that's what we talked about, was getting manpower where we needed it, after we combined those departments and did some things, uh, to get it where we needed it, and not necessarily, okay, the minute we got money, we're gonna bring those exact positions back, because that's maybe not the best way to use money that we have. One, two, so, the, 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 whatever we have leftover reserves, okay, so, scares me to death to say, okay, if we finally, after eighteen years, have reserves, now we're gonna spend a lot off the back, because what happens if we have, well, we. Because what happens if we have, well, we have, we have this, it costs a quarter million to fix, and now all of a sudden we have that money sitting there, reserve left over, but we spent it in something else. But as a stopgap, knowing that no more than twelve months after this budget starts, no more than twelve months after this budget starts, we'll have that money. If the council approves the annexation, if the, if the, the pilot agreement doesn't happen, and the council approves the annexation, and we're no more than twelve months away on October first for that money, we know that. So using that as a stopgap in the meantime and saying, okay, um, right after October first, let's see what we have, and take this, we're not gonna borrow on October first because we saw that stuff coming in. You know, appeals, sometimes appeals issued for three hundred, but it's only two-hundred-and-sixty-five when it gets here, so it's not, we don't want that. There's a pretty good idea what it's gonna give, it's not gonna be less than the number that we think it's gonna be, it's probably, it could be a little bit more. Coming in the October meeting and saying, okay, what's the most left over from twenty seventeen? Or twenty eighteen, so, okay, there was two-hundred, we, we believe there's two-hundred-and-forty-thousand left over. Okay, so let's borrow that out of reserves and let's go ahead and hire some employees until we get the stack money, we get the stack money, we put back. But let's use that to, to start out. We know we can do that in the middle of October. Based on whatever's left of October, we know we can do that. But, but not, not just spending the reserves, but maybe borrow in front of it to get started early. We can do that. Are you, I can do that, you guys can do that. So that might be, that, that might be part of your answer here is, whatever we're gonna have left over in reserves, we're gonna use that to get new, new people. We're gonna borrow that, if, if the stack pilot agreement doesn't happen, we're gonna borrow that, and we're going to hire employees for this year, and we'll, we'll put it back next year, we'll put it back whenever we do get more staff. That puts those people on the ground, that lets us do this and put people on the ground by the end of October.
In the next month. I'm sorry.
Hi.
Just wanna make a simple statement from something I know. Morale goes up, productivity goes up, that's double. You can hire people, but if your morale is not up, where are you gonna keep them? Y'all lost three people here, how long?
Thirty days.
Thirty days, actually it's more than three, now it's three. Two of them were pretty high impact, all three of them weren't impact, and they ain't coming back. They ain't coming back, once you lose them, they don't come back. Weigh that into your decision.
Does the morale of everyone gonna be up if some people don't get it?
With the eighty-eighty and this new cycle plan, almost everybody does. If the will of the council is to make sure that everybody at least sees the one dollar increase, we can figure out how to do it in a cycle plan.
It need, it needs to be more than that.
See, there, there was possible, we could figure out how to do it in a cycle plan, we'll figure out something.
Yes, we just don't want anyone negatively.
Whatever we figure out in a cycle plan has to be fair to everybody, so we'll do it, it may, it may mean increasing um, certain, maybe in the top years, it may mean increasing that more, um, but of course, there are very few in those top groups, so it doesn't have that big an impact to, to increase that a little bit. And give them something to shoot for, to get to thirty or forty years.
And keep the, and keep the fire department stuck.
Yes. Yes.
I will say one thing though, and nobody's here because they need to hear this place here. I can understand that, we have got to make sure that their primary purpose, because you're talking about the transfer station, that's one of his fire departments. So those guys are showing up at the transfer station that's closed, it's because they fight fire.
But we can hire separate transportation, full-time, not full-time.
That's possible, that's possible.
If the community wants that.
Uh, there's a possibility that's one of the things we can do.
That's why I want streets, I want that.
That's something we can look at then, but just knowing that we may have to adjust how that's happening over there because they're getting a cycle to get a department, and they're getting paid when they go to fire, they're gonna have to make some adjustments in some ways.
So, the eighty-eighty plan now is turned to eighty-five, eighty-five. The eighty-eighty plan now is turned into an eighty-five, eighty-five because now you're giving them a stipend as well. Pretty much.
Wait, that, that is one way to look, that could be, that could be one way to look, but the reason we had, but the reason we had to do the stipends, because the stipends were already there, and so if we just got rid of the old stipends, we have lost something like that. Because there were souls scattered across, there was a lot of employees that got zero, and there was employees getting three hundred plus on the phone. And so that's kind of, and, and, and then keep in mind too, some of the stipends, I mean, some of those stipends are, are, are necessary because they require additional, you know, there's additional, like the K nine stipends, but that's additional duty, so um, the uniforms and police officers, they have to be able to take care of the uniforms, you know, taking care, we can't use, we use uniforms for these guys, and so we take care of the, oh, so we don't have a company like that for the PD. So there needs to be something there for them to be able to take their uniforms and give them taking care, so if they last around, we provide uniforms. So some of those things, uh, irregardless of, you know, some of them are built in to stay, you know, by, you know, that, that's, that's, that's what it costs them to do. Um, the, the tenure one, adding the tenure one in, to try to balance out all that other stuff, was about thirty thousand all the time, it's one of those. So, yeah, yes, I mean, we, 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 but then again, that becomes a recruiting tool. Uh, you know, we, we, here's the, here's the pay scale, here's what happened with the pay scale, and after you've been here two years, you're gonna start seeing a tenure, a tenure stipend. So recruiting tools can help us cross the border.
So, one question, where have we lost, where have we lost the most employees of our life?
Parts.
Parts. They don't like to work in parts, they don't, they don't stay there.
They, they, you know, I mean, it's ten dollars an hour, you make some work, so. That's not Bram, Bram's a good guy. It's not a problem. And, uh, you know, they, they can go get a, 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 a job doing manual labor anyplace else around town, it's more than ten dollars an hour. And, you know, the reality is, we, we talked about this a little bit last night too, with well, it's not just ten dollars an hour because we pay for the insurance we pay for some stuff, too, but most of the people that are coming, those ten dollars an hour adults don't care about insurance when they retire because they're twenty-something years old, and they're not even taking that compensation yet. So it's a benefit to give that care, because they could make thirteen dollars an hour doing something someplace else. You know, then twenty years old, they'll be thinking about retirement, you know, so, so they don't, they don't even focus on that stuff, it's irrelevant. It's just something else that they have, so, but they can make two dollars an hour more, not have, not have insurance, they don't care, they don't make two dollars an hour. You know, that's just like, I mean, we lost, if, if, when the world war first started, we lost a lot of our upper-end employees uh, from the cities of Oakland, because they were making, you know, twelve or thirteen or fourteen or fifteen dollars an hour here, but they go in the whole field at twenty or twenty-five or thirty. We did, and we, we've seen, some of those guys have tried to come back or have come back for a little bit, we didn't, they're like, well, we didn't have, go ahead, no retirement, but they're, they're in their forties and they start to think about it. It's like, well, yeah, now, now retirement matters, we saw they have twenty years left to spend in retirement, so now they're thinking about what they gotta do to worry those, those, those lower, those lower positions, normally are forty-year-old people, and they're twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, they, they take care of those. And that's everywhere, that's something else.
So if the eighty-eighty, could their ten dollars go up to what, twelve?
Twelve, yeah, most of, most of them are twelve, twelve, thirteen, or twelve, fifteen, twenty-seven, I don't remember what the hour is. And then with the site about it, um, after two years, that, I mean, that's another, um.
That's a tenure stipend, right?
Yeah, so, but it started two years, and that's another six hundred, also another fifty dollars a month, so that's basically another few cents an hour. But something for them to shoot, shoot for, I mean, you know, now immediately, as soon as they come in, it's like, oh, you just made it two years, I'll make six hundred more for you. They know that.
In, in some place, in, in some place of employment, they have critical area stipends. I don't know if we'd want to consider something like that for, uh, street parks or streets or some of the areas where there is some turnover.
So what we talked about when we did this, this was, this, the basic baseline, but that's, it's not about losing. And so establish the baseline and then come back, okay, yeah, we're still losing a lot of guys in parks, we're still losing people in streets, we're still losing, you know, because, so, yeah, that's, that's, that's the whole idea, then we add another stipend, it's this much for this department, because we have a follow-up retention. Or, or whatever, you can do whatever you wanna do after that, um, you know, look at that and handle the possibility of the increase. That has huge benefits because everybody else around here is having a possibility of increase. Um, here, that's not something that you look at, but here, you look at every city, they look at that possibility of increase every year. Um, just, you know, it, it, what, what you give, the baseline established, and everybody understands that it's very costly work, you're surprised that all of a sudden, there's not such a worry about a big jump after that because, it's fair, everybody's doing the same thing, it's fair. That's all, yeah, if everybody gives a two percent, that's fine, everybody can call three percent, or, yeah, we understand, well, that's a part of it, we all, we got it, or, or, have a well-terrified system, whatever, so they do get an extra, well, for being a part or something like that.
So is there any money to do that right now, critical section, critical area stipend?
Well, maybe you got thirty whatever thousand on October, and look at it as six thousand.
Where are they making at least fourteen an hour?
But you wanna have another summer out, we can probably, we can look out, sure.
Where are they making fourteen an hour?
Well, some, something that's critical areas, I have been four streets and the gas or the, the maintenance, all the maintenance workers.
We can do it out of our side, but it's, it's works out, or outside of there, we can look, whatever you guys are willing to look at.
Critical area?
It's, yeah, that's how they term a critical area. They, they can have a school system for, they can have science, but they can't find that in science.
How, how does that work with a critical stipend, whether it be like as much knowledge as you can learn on the job, or, you know what I mean, like, when I started, I started off as a meter reader, and then I learned gas, and I learned water, then I learned sewer, and I learned maintenance, and I learned how to patch the street, I mean, is that what you're saying, like, critical stipend is as much knowledge as you can learn, or?
Yeah, what, what, what you're talking about mostly is, is probably built into a pay scale, scheduling. And that's how the school districts, that's how they pay their employees, based on training, certifications, endorsements, uh, masters, doctors, et cetera, et cetera.
Right.
So what I'm talking about is critical, critical area of need, and the school system, they have a critical area of need, like math, science. So the math, science teachers in our district get a, uh, three thousand dollar stipend. They'll get a six thousand dollar stipend, that's how we attract those teachers to that district on top of their other pay. Because they have a problem recruiting math and science. So if we're having a problem keeping people in parks or in streets, or, you know, we wanna pull off the people in those areas, uh, maybe we should consider a critical area stipend or something.
And how much, what, what would you base that on?
It's just what can, can be afforded, I mean, uh, but we'd lump them up to maybe from twelve to fourteen, you know?
Or look at, I mean, you could do, I mean, you could be set out, um, that they can have a probation, I mean, it's not the, 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 the parks or whatever, but you, but there could be another, there could be another, there could be a hundred dollars a month. That's another twelve hundred dollars in there per year, or you could do a dollar an hour, make it twenty, you could do two thousand, eighty dollars a year, that's a dollar an hour.
You're talking about, in, in, in your employees or, or just everybody general in the department?
Just everybody that works in that department. In the school district, they, they don't distinguish between a junior teacher, which is.
Hold on, I think what, what would be the lookout, now, if you put out the, all the criteria is, if, if it's based on the fact that, is it retention-based for that department? If it's retention-based for that department, then it would be specific to the department. If it's based on the amount of time they work outside, then it would apply to more of a department. If, you know, we could have to set some parameters on what you would actually want to do with, with that, but I think that's not that hard, we can figure that out for you.
Yes, Sonia.
Uh, that's like, like, um, the, where I work at, we start off our maintenance guys at fifteen dollars. But they're only allowed to do certain things, but if they wanna go in and start doing, working with plumbing and electrical, we have to send them to the training in, in San Antonio, uh, uh, to get that permit in order for them to be able, and we up their, their pay as well. I mean, I don't know how the city employees here, are, are they certified, or do they carry any kind of, uh?
We, we have some part, because there's been no basic, kind of, the starting point, um, and just depending on when they were hired, or what, what they came in at. And then certifications have been paid, have been paid with assignments, so if they went without some extra certification, at a certain time, they had a stipend, other times they got a certification, they didn't get a stipend. So, I mean, that's, set the baseline and then come back and say, okay, here's, here's our baseline for stipends as well, but now we wanna add in this stipend. And this stipend is gonna be a critical area or whatever it is, and this is what it's gonna pay, and this is, this is, this is what triggers. What triggers it is a turnover rate of twenty-five percent per year, or what triggers it is the fact that that's working outside a percent of the time, or whatever it is. Um, the council stipend, that's gonna be, and that goes, no, it isn't, so, everybody applies to get some. Um, and then if you wanna go to look for, you know, training certifications, you get this, you know, whatever, then we add those, and then we start building on that. We're just, this whole thing is just trying to get that bottom line, I mean, this is, we're, you know, we're not, we're not picking it free by that, we're, we're picking fruit off the ground, just trying to get everybody out of the same, even out of the same trough, so then we start.
Well, that's how we base our, our, our pay scale with our employees, as far as them being certified with EPA to handle, you know, air conditionings and plumbing and electrical, so I'm, I'm just throwing it out there, I mean.
It's kinda bad, Eric, one of the things too, to think about it, is I see it, hear these stipends, really, and you're coming about the school, I'm familiar with that, is that, it is an investment. And if we're, you know, we're, we're encouraging these employees to stay longer, and a, and a ten-year employee that we keep ten years, like, too, because he's a good hand, and he adds more value than a two-year employee, because he knows more and understands more and knows the system. And so I'd venture to say, the way I look at that, if we're spending sixty-one thousand dollars in stipends, we're probably getting a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars in value, you know? And, and it, and it is, uh, reimbursement certainly for the PD guys, get, I mean, the, uh, the dog guys and things like that, and the uniform guys, but but I, I look at it as an investment, and I, I think it's, uh, you know, for those kind of things too, Sonia, where we encourage our staff members to have more licenses and permits, so that they're more valuable, and that's how you do it, pay a little bit more. And then that, that employees certainly have more value, so I look at it like an investment that uses a bigger return than what we're spending.
Well, that, that's one of the scary things, from, from medicine, that we're trying to bend this, that budget, when you have the training money, the, and the council, uh, was the last year, you know, we've kinda spent this most training because we wanted to get more our employees trained to do things. And so now you start giving them that training, and if you're not being competitive with what they do, or at least, so that's why we, that's why we started looking at the, the contracts, if we're gonna send you to this training, you're gonna say, we started with this, you give another, you're gonna stay this, all this long, you're gonna do this year, do this year, do this, and now we're looking at those of the PD for K nine training, and for some of the PD as well. So we want to make that investment on our employees, to make them better employees, and to make more productive employees. We expect something in return if we're gonna make the investment to begin with, but I can't, you know, if you're gonna sit there and tell somebody, well, you know, we're gonna send you to K nine school, and once you get K nine off, we're, we're gonna acquire a twenty-year contract, you know, you're gonna have to work for us for free for that, for that thing forever, then it'd be very good, but it's the same, we're making the investment, and you know, for two years, um, you're off, after we make the investment, but then after that, you know, you, you develop that skills some more, you may, then after that, maybe, then it has some value to say, maybe you need to get a stipend for the certification, it's gotta be a balance of that as well. Can, can, if we get the training, just when we get back from training, start handling it because it helps with the certification.
So, can next year, if I look at the employee end book, I'll be able to see a pay schedule there, is that correct?
That, okay, so, this will get put into an ordinance, uh, in the budget, but then we need to put it into an ordinance after that. Because if you just put it in the budget, that is, it's, it's effective for one year. So it needs to go into an ordinance, but the ordinance that should go in should be an employee personnel, and so this is the first step, let's be, review that personnel item, because the personnel item's got other issues as well.
So if I go work at parks, first year, I'll know exactly how much I get paid, right?
Absolutely, absolutely.
And, and there's no, there, there, there's no deviation of?
When you come in the door, they're gonna hand you that book, and it's gonna say, this is what the stipend is.
And not just because you know somebody.
Exactly, that's the whole point of all this, you know, say in that book, this is what you're starting. Now, if you guys aren't there, not by here.
That's a whole nother ballgame.
Yeah, you're two thousand, but as long as you guys are there, not here, that's what's gonna happen.
So what we're looking at, um, as Councilman Ed Ananda stated, um, a critical area stipend for the streets, eighty-eighty without any employees being negatively affected, and the five-biter stipend stays. Anything else?
Not just the streets, it was, it was a critical area.
We'll come up with two or three different.
Streets, uh, parks.
Parks.
Gas, people that work outdoors.
So, so you're also on doors and off? So, so you're gonna focus on outdoors and on, on, retention, or you just focus on that? And on turnover, or something like that?
I think if we focus on outdoors, we're gonna probably see the same numbers in retention, just because there are some things that need to be...
They know you're not moving your office outdoors. Okay.
And, and the, the stipend plan, with nobody being negative, figure out a way to make sure nobody's negative anymore?
Yes. No one loses. Okay. So, with that being, I'm, I'm gonna ready to close it down. You have anything to say before I close it?
I'm figuring out where we're at.
Okay, we're gonna ready to close the workshop. Okay, need to entertain a motion to close workshop, please? All in favor, time is nine-thirty-three. So, you suggested we table item...
I suggested you table the item with what you wanna see in the next version.
Till Wednesday. Wednesday, yes.
Move the table, the budget item, with consideration for the instructions again in the workshop, address, Wednesday.
Motion on the table, may I have a second?
Sure, sure, let's, let's make sure what the instruction was. I'll be, I'll be back, but I will tell you, you just said, eighty-eighty new stipends, if we go on any negatively impacted, so figure out how to fix that critical area stipend added, based on how it'll work, and put in the longer part of the budget.
Yes.
Is that's it, we didn't have to do that?
Yes.
Anything else? That was, that's everything, okay, I got one.
Okay. A second, we, we had a motion, there's a second, all in favor? Motion carries your next, Miss. Item fine, motion adjourned, please.
To move.